Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's town meeting for the evening of Monday, May 5. At this time, I'll just remind you to silence your cell phones before we continue with our meeting. And at this time, I welcome you and join you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Future meetings, we do have a budget review at a Commissioner meeting on May 12th, which is next week. At 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. Parks and Rec Committee is coming up on May 20th at 7:00 PM here in the town office. And of course, our June Board of Commissioners meeting will be on June 2nd at 7:00 PM. Here in the town office and on Zoom. Are there any other meetings that I might be forgetting?
June 28th, I think we have a hearing on the comp plan.
That's right. Public hearing.
I checked with the, sorry, I checked with the Julia before the meeting. Do you have a Planning Commission meeting in May? No, June, I'm sorry. Oh, that's why it's not on there if it's June. 28th, that's why it's not on the agenda packet.
Okay, so that would be the public hearing for the comp plan though. Okay. Any others? All right, sounds good. All right, moving on to our first item is approving the minutes from April 7. I did submit some changes to be considered. I don't know if they were reviewed by town staff.
The the grammatical changes and the addition of Commissioner Turnquist had sent some, those have been changed. But since they were clarification questions to the minutes, that should be brought up in the meeting for the board to vote on to change.
Okay, so it's not printed out, I see, for them to consider?
No.
Okay, so we'll table those until next time until we can have a printed copy. Is there a motion to table the meeting or the approval of the meeting minutes? Until next time when we can look at it in more detail.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. All right, looking at the police report.
Good evening, Deputy Barcello. Monthly police report for April. It was two of us. We used six days of annual leave. Our training, we both had a full day of our spring in service. 110 calls for service handled, one arrest, 16 traffic stops. I really don't have anything worth passing on this month, but we should be getting back our more detailed statistics. They just passed something down, so I'm still trying to figure it out and hopefully if everything's there, I can have that for you guys ready for next month.
All because of that new software, right?
Yeah, we got a whole new recording system. Yep.
Yeah, I love it.
Fun.
All right, that was the only question I had, and I guess no news is good news. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Any questions for him? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Town Manager's Report, Ms. Willetts.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report from March of 2025. Following the last meeting where it was requested to just highlight anything that was key. I just have two highlights in my manager's report. One is a reminder that trash will be remain Mondays in the month of May, except for Memorial Day. Trash will be picked up on Tuesday, May 27th. On page 14, under noteworthy, hydrant flushing was scheduled for the week of April 21st. It was complete successfully completed without any incidents or complaints. And that's my report.
Thank you. I just have one question. I see that there was a meeting about the Stormwater Utility Fee Fund. Was that any change from what we had previously?
It is actually looking to update the code. Technically, it's not an enterprise fund, the way the code is written. And so we had a meeting with the auditors and the town attorney and in June will be making a recommendation to have it just strictly a dedicated fund instead of an enterprise fund because it will never generate enough revenue to be self sustaining.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Willetts, Commissioner Turnquest?
Yeah, I have a few questions. In terms of the new sewer line at the pool and the sewer line ditch, I was just wondering where those were charged in the budget.
To the sewer.
Okay, and then the lead line inventory. What is the completion date on that?
It's ongoing. We have to provide MDE with an update. I believe October of this year to see if we have any other responses in because right now we have about 475 unknowns. MDE wants us to knock that number down as much as possible. Our consultant has filed for a grant through MDE to help with identifying the unknowns as well as any lead line replacements. All lines have to be replaced beginning in 2027, and we have 10 years to replace, I believe. It's not going to end anytime soon.
And then could you provide some information about the Lincoln Avenue Traffic Study Meeting?
Ms. Shaw got a grant for the Lincoln Avenue. We've received numerous complaints about traffic speeding, not stopping at stop signs, not being able to get through traffic. So it's basically just a traffic study to see if there's any improvements that can be made to Lincoln Avenue as far as just to address some of the traffic complaints that we've received.
Was that the one that's tied to the blinking stop signs or am I thinking of signals?
That that'll be tied to that one as well. And it basically is going to come up with a master plan for Lincoln Avenue and then based off what the recommendations are, then we can pursue additional grant funding.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then one last question. The new concession stand that's in the park, is it completed?
Just about. They had some punch list items from the inspection last week. There's some plumbing issues. A grease trap needs to be installed per the county. And we're hoping that final inspections will happen this week.
So the bathrooms aren't operational yet?
Correct, because we do not have our permits yet from the county.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we're moving on to the Grant Administrator Reports.
I didn't highlight, she didn't send me anything, but if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them. Page 18 highlights some of the grant reimbursements that we're waiting on. They are all water related. I believe 360,000 has come in, Kim. Yes, that amount, the first bulleted item, the water clarify reimbursement for 360,000 has been received.
Has that been factored into the Treasurer's Report yet? Do you know? Okay, so, okay.
Yes. So all the three of those amounts have not been factored into.
Ms. Shaw. Oh, not Ms. Shaw.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. No, it has not. And so all three of those should be factored into what your water fund is showing on the Treasurer's Report.
I just had a quick question. You might have, this might have been mentioned at a previous meeting. Upcoming Grant Opportunity Open Space Program. Program Open Space. Do we know that, what is that going towards additional opens?
I think that's the, the decision was to pursue development of possibly a green open space on South Seaton Avenue.
Okay, and then I saw all through the reports about the Safe Streets and Roads for All Department of Transportation Grant. That seems like it's a big buzzword. Is there something specific that we have in mind for that grant?
The safe streets. Yeah, I think Ms. Shaw was looking into that one. I don't think we found the best fit for it yet. We had looked at using it for the North Seaton Avenue, and I think when she came back that it wasn't the right fit. That grant would also be, could be used in conjunction on the Lincoln Avenue one. Once we have the findings on that, I'd have to ask Ms. Shaw where she is with the safe street ones. I don't think we have a project for it yet.
Okay, just kind of gathering information. And the last question, I promise, Community Legacy on page 15, when it said remaining funds have been obligated to another project, was that another project within the same realm as for facade improvements?
Sorry, it said 23 dash. Oh, okay. I believe we're using it for the project at 22 East Main.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, that's fine. All right.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to Town Operations Specialist Report.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. Let's see, for the Town Operations Report, the first item I have is 22 East Main Street Beautification Project I'm working on. And part of that is going to be funded by the remaining legacy grant money. And also I have a pending grant through the county as well to redo this, the brickwork and the front of the building, some painting and some updates, adding a bench and some flowers. And that's all going to be between the two grants that'll be covered. The main thing I've been working on is the farmer's market is going very well. We have well over 20 vendors, including food trucks and shaved ice and all sorts of crafts and actual farmers. So it's going very well. Let's just hope for no rain. Still working on different ordinance reviews, the emergency action plans, working on evacuation plans for all sorts of different emergencies. I'm going to be working with Ms. Walt Brecker on that as well. And the town owned rental property packets that will be done to present to you for next month as requested. And completed projects, the Wayfinder signs are up. They look great. A few tweaks have to be made on some of the directional errors, arrows. But they look really good. They did a very good job.
Right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
All right.
Looking forward to the, the grand opening. Hopefully it will be a
Again, no pressure.
Thank you. Um, okay, parking enforcement report. Okay, moving on to Town Planner's Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Planner's Report. I've listed out the permits that were issued during the month of April. Some notes about the ongoing development projects. Federal Stone, as you know, it's under construction and we coordinated with the developer staff and consultant at RKNK regarding water lines connecting to the wastewater headworks. For Christ Community Church, the Maryland Department of the Environment had a virtual public hearing on April 29th in response to a formal challenge opposing the issuance of permits for this project. For Emmett Ridge, the forest delineation, forest conservation and preliminary plans were conditionally approved. And we're coordinating with them guarding the adequacy, school adequacy test for the PFO. And the amendment to the council PFO has been drafted and will be presented tonight. And Brookfield Phase Five Forest Conservation and Final Subdivision Plans were reviewed. Planning Commission actually approved them conditionally on April 28th. And I would just like to highlight a few other things. For the during the month of April, the Board of Appeals met twice to discuss the special exception request for Chesterton Academy of Enunciation to let them continue to occupy 17750 Community Road Place and Industrial Park. And the Community Legacy Grant, the Sustainable Communities Work Group met and they reviewed 10 projects. They're currently being reviewed by DHCD and the Maryland Historical Trust. And I've listed the meetings that I've attended and will attended during the month of April, and that's my report.
Thank you. I just, you mentioned a couple things as far as Christ Community Church with the virtual public hearing. What was the outcome of that?
It's still open. I think they take public comment till May 15th. So it's still open under MDE's review.
Oh, so it started on April 29th, but it continues through May?
Yeah, they opened up, they opened up the permit for public comment and then at one request, they had a public hearing to address that one complaint. That complaint's done, but it's still open for public comment till May 15th.
Okay.
So if anybody else had any other comment.
So then after that, I guess
It should be done.
Okay.
Yes.
And then with Chesterton Academy, what did, was there an outcome that came about with those meetings?
Yes, so they approved it for two years, so until June 30, 2027 is how, that's when they have to move out.
Okay, thank you. And then let's see, I saw I saw Wawa listed. Is this big news that we should know about as far as meetings attended?
Oh. There's this one company Paramount Realty, they were interested in putting a Wawa along, what's the road? Route 15, sorry, yeah. But it's, we're still discussing it. There's nothing.
Very preliminary.
Yes.
Okay. Same thing with Daughters of Charity Potential Subdivision. I'm sure it's very preliminary.
Yes.
And where would that be located?
That's near Mother Seaton School. And part of it, they're suggesting would become part of the village zone instead of
Okay.
institutional.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
Lots of exciting things. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one. Do we have an estimated completion date for Federal Stone?
Uh, no, I, I don't. I mean, their water meters still have to come in, one of them, so it's, it's unknown. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Commissioner Comments. We're starting with Ms. Hagan.
First, I just want to say that all the work that the volunteers put in over at the Community Garden and everything, and now we have Emmett the Rooster, thanks to the donation on this weekend. So go ahead, get your picture with our new sign and Emmett the Rooster, and we still have spaces available for planting over there. So I'll probably be over there this weekend planting corn. So if you want to come out and join me. Last month, we also had the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting and I wanted to relay that the citizens were concerned about raising of the water rates. But at the same time, they're concerned about that if we don't raise rates, what happens to our infrastructure? If we produce the water and don't have a way to deliver it, that's just as big as a concern. So they're like, wanted to make sure we look at all options. You know, they suggested different, you know, grants that the government has that we should be looking into, if there were donations, you know, in the past, the town had flirted with the idea of doing fundraisers, which you really don't want to be doing as a government and everything, but they, you know, kind of stressed that they really wanted us to look at all options because you need the money for the infrastructure in addition to that and put it out there. So I wanted to make sure that that point got across and I wanted to congratulate the mayor on his meeting with the residents last month went really well. I had some apprehensions that it wouldn't be as pleasant and as easygoing as it was, and it was really great to hear the feedback from the residents.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquest. Nothing, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sweeney.
We're gearing up for the opening of the pool. Concession Stand Number Three will be opening this month, hopefully. As soon as I get the grease trap in and a couple other odds and ends fixed. There will be a big major veterans tournament on the first two weekends in May, so the town will be full of children on both sides of the, of South Seaton Avenue. Both parks will be full all day long for two weekends in a row. So we'll have to be careful and watch out for the kids. They'll be crossing the roads because they'll be parking at the school probably, walking across the street. Community Day will be coming up soon. Donations will be coming in. We've gotten a lot of donations back for Community Day. We're working on next year already. So we're, Community Day will be kicking off at the end of the month, on I think it's the 20th, last Saturday of the month, the 26th, I think it is, 25th. Can't remember. But always the last Saturday of the month, it just changes in date. But the fireworks will be at 9:45 here in town and they're already paid for. So we come out, enjoy yourself. Everything's free except for the food. Music's free, pools open free. Everything's, games are all free, so come out and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoover. Okay, I just have a few comments. First of all, for all the mothers or people who are in a mother type figure, whether you're an aunt or a sister and you play that part, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. And this weekend, Streamlink continued to add trees to the Daughters of Charity property along South Seaton, and it's coming along great. I had the opportunity to assist. They have a variety of wonderful trees that are going in. It's a, it's a great, Streamlink Education is just a great organization. And we're very lucky to have them partner with the town. Fallen Fighter, Firefighters Weekend, so just wanted to thank all of our emergency service providers, firefighters, police officers, those who work on ambulances, all of them, for everything that they do to keep our community safe. And of course, May 17th is the opening of the revamped farmer's market, so family and fun, farm, family and fun day, so please come out and join us. I know Brandy's put a lot of work into it, has a lot of wonderful activities lined up, and I don't think anyone will be disappointed. So thank you for your hard work on that. And with that, turning to Mayor's comments.
Good evening. I'll be real brief. I've had the opportunity this past month to speak at the inauguration of President Joyce, the new president at Mount St. Mary's University, and that was a great event. And also this past weekend, I got to deliver the welcome address to the families of the fallen firefighters from all over the country, which is always a a very, very special event. So that was along with a whole bunch of other meetings and other things that we got into this last month. That was the highlights. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is it for Commissioner Comments, Mayor Comments. So now we are turning to public comments. We have two people signed up for public comments. You will have a four minute limit, so when you come up, just state your name and whether or not you, you live within town limits, you don't have to state your address per se, and just make sure to watch the little dots to help you determine how much time you have left, and don't forget to hit the red button to turn on the microphone. Starting with Jack, come on up.
Jack Deathridge, live in Emmitsburg. I'd like you all to consider putting something on the agenda sometime this year to let me have the entire lot for the Community Garden. We're already making plans and the sooner I know whether I can use the whole lot or not, the sooner I can start accumulating stuff to build the thing I have in mind. And that's it.
Okay, and I understand there's a Community Garden ribbon cutting coming up?
That's what I've been told.
Yes. Do we know if that's been finalized?
15th at 2:00 PM next Thursday.
Is that confirmed now or?
That was the best email I received on it. I'm assuming it's confirmed. Now.
I actually just, just got an email at 6 o'clock from Ms. Shaw. She did not receive anybody's confirmation they're available on May 15th. So now she is looking for the following week of May 19th through the 23rd. This is a requirement from the grant that we were awarded, so we, we have to do one. So she's looking for volunteers that might be available the week, sometime the week of May 19th through the 23rd.
Oh, I did reply that I could attend if it was at 4:00 instead of 2:00, but I didn't hear back. I don't know. That makes a difference, but the time definitely is a factor for us.
Yeah, May 15th, I'm out of town, but I could potentially do it the following week, depending on what day it is.
Okay, all right.
Is there a time better for everybody that I can let her know, since she has to get the funding agency here? I think that's probably why 4:00 didn't work, because I think they're coming from
Oh. If it's the following week, not wait a minute. Um, I have more flexibility on Fridays.
Friday's good for me too for that week. I think it's the week, is that Memorial Weekend?
No, no, well.
Friday, the 23rd is Memorial Weekend, I think.
Uh, yeah. But are we?
That's fine. I mean, because I'm off that day.
Oh, well, that case.
That Friday was good and it's Friday before Memorial Weekend.
I was thinking the Friday after the 15th.
That's the 23rd.
Anyways, we'll float some.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, I might be out of town on, on that Friday before Memorial Day, but I will let her know. What is 2:00 PM potentially the latest they could do it? I'll find out. Okay, all right, because I might be able to be flexible with enough advanced notice. Great.
Friday would be the 23rd. Is that what the date we're going to look at? Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we were still using some of your time, Mr. Deathridge, so I think we're sorry. Or thank you, and it is coming along, the garden is coming along nicely. We, I do love the rooster and the sign. It looks very official. If nope, no other questions. All right, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Dennis Ebaugh.
All right, good evening. My name's Danny Ebaugh. Live here in Emmitsburg, 39 Federal Avenue. It's been a while since I've been down here to talk before you folks. I've remained calm. I do watch the town meetings. I'm one of the few that watch, but I would tell you that I know it got a little contentious here last meeting about the water issue. That's the first reason I'm here, but I know you all, you're working, first of all, I want to say this. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff, thanks for what you do for Emmitsburg. And I mean that, really, you do a lot. And I know you're going to come to some agreement on the water issue. I'm still able to pay my water bill after the 72% increases. And I just, I've got an idea and I'm probably going to get shot down on it, but it's the money in the sewer, in the sewer fund, is that, is that, who put that money in that fund? In the sewer fund? Where did, where the town receive the money for the sewer fund? The sewer? The sewer's a pot, the water's a pot. I mean, it doesn't come out of the air, right?
Right.
People of Emmitsburg put that money in there?
It's, they're both enterprise funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, let's just see, is it, does that money generate in that account from the people of Emmitsburg? Yes or no?
Yes.
Good. Why can't we take, and I don't know, I don't have the figures, how much money is in the, I can't answer questions. Figure out, it'll come up later on in the Treasurer's. I don't know what's in that account, but why can't we take part of that? We're not taking and taking it down and give it to Trump, this bound or anybody or any of the, it would be, it would be cut there in Emmitsburg. Who says that we can't take part of that money and put it in the water fund to help out?
I I.
And and you don't have to answer, I'm just asking you to think about.
I I like your line of thinking, I'm not gonna take up your time, go ahead.
No, and and. If you have to raise the water rate again, I was told two years would probably be about it, then we would. And I've heard, I've heard Mayor Hoover talk about, he would like to at least cut it back to eighteen percent. But now I'm hearing again that, no, we may have to do it again here. Did I understand Commissioner Hagan to say that there was a, the mayor had a, was that about what the water situation? I don't want to take, the the mayor had a meeting just to meet with the citizens and talk, answer any question. I'm sorry if I I missed that, I I really am, or maybe I was busy with my sister and all that, I don't know. But anyhow, I would just like to say, I don't want to come down here and cause trouble, but that money is our money, if if if. And in difficult times and extreme times, and you guys know what's coming. I mean, a loaf of bread in a couple of years, how much is that gonna cost? Or the stuff that you buy from Everseats, everything is just continuing to go through the roof. And I'm in really uh, you know, I've been retired and I've been on my social security and my pension that I got working all the years that I worked. But my dad going away just retired too, so she's gonna be on social security, you know, they're talking about, so really, do what you can. To try to keep this water rate from going out of sight too. And again, we were, we were charged years ago that. With, in my time in Emmonsburg, we built two sewer plants. And we were, the the sewer rates went up astronomically to cover the cost of the second water sewer plant. That's why you're sent with all that money in that fund, it's it's our money, we raised it. Take a half a million dollars and put in the water fund to help you through this stuff, it's not going anywhere, it's it's here, it's already here. And if you have to raise the rate, but raise it. These is can, I only have five seconds, but I would say this, we do have part of the churches project, if you've rode by and seen, we've got all the railings installed. The handicap ramp, we've got a handicap, I'm just hoping the town is gonna tear this up and they do the Green Street Plan, but we had that done. The sidewalk that runs along. DePaul Street, I've, well, the mayor and I'm not with Ms. Wollitz and I'm not with the heat. There was a mention there, there could be some ADA money. We're gonna, we're we're moving ahead, we're gonna try to do the second half of that money, so I'm here begging you not to raise money. But I'm actually, really, if you find a little ADA money that you can chip in, because it was a big project for our little church and our attendance down, so it was over. Close, getting close to four hundred thousand dollars, okay, so we, and we wanna do it right, we wanna work with you, wanna put a crosswalk in there when you. When we get done and the streets paved, so that's all my time, but I I appreciate, you know, the hard job y'all have.
Thank you, Mr. Ebaugh. Um I believe that wraps up public comments. So we are moving on to administrative business. Item number one is for consideration, approval of additional space for the Cedar Avenue Garden. I know Mr. Deathridge uh mentioned at the last. Meeting that he was hoping to go a little bit further out and uh we gave conditional approval. To do so, so that he could get ready for the ribbon cutting ceremony and we did receive. Um a layout and a letter justifying the space. So having said that, I turn it over to the Commissioners for discussion. This is basically just the approval for what is set up currently. Right, not the addition of the whole lot, that's a separate request, so this is to approve what is set up currently the way it is.
Second expansion is what you have sitting out there currently, correct?
The one that is in here is what's out there currently.
Yes, I'm just looking to charge this, I wanna make sure.
Oh, oh, yes, yeah, this is what's out there currently, correct, you're, yeah. Questions, comments, is there a motion? I appreciate the justification and I don't have any further questions, I think he covered it all.
I don't have any questions, um. I make a motion, we accept the expansion for the second phase of the community garden as presented.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner Hoover, did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. It's looking good, congratulations. Um from there, we're moving on to our consent agenda, which we have none. And then on to our treasurer's reports, turning to Commissioner Terrence. Uh this is the cash activity report, as of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Our cash balance on April first was seven million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. We had deposits totaling four hundred and sixty-nine thousand and seventy-five dollars. We withdrew nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eighty-eight dollars. For an operating balance forward of six million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. Um our top ten checks are there in the middle of the page. And our fund breakdown as of April twenty-third, our general fund, we have two million. Our capital projects, we have four hundred and forty-seven thousand. Stormwater management, nine thousand. Our water fund is negative five hundred and fifty-two thousand. But it was mentioned previously that we have four hundred and thirty-eight thousand coming in for reimbursements. And also, I know water bills are due today, so that should take that fun up for that. ARPA money, one point nine million, our sewer fund, two point seven million. For a total of six point six million. I did have a question, when do we expect the ARPA funds to be expended, is that the end of calendar year twenty-six? That's all I have, anybody else?
Thank you.
It's a planning commission report, it was that pretty much, do you, do you have anything to, sorry, Commissioner Hoover?
No, as as already addressed, so we had a meeting last month, at the end of the month and Brookfield, so the vision was the only agenda.
Okay.
And they're meeting this month.
Short and sweet, thank you. Alright, and then moving on to agenda items, starting with. Agenda item number one, initial presentation of the F Y twenty-six budget.
Okay, I I can start this off, um I passed out a uh. A financial budget summary, I'm not gonna read it to you word for word, I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. Uh in the general fund, you'll see where uh uh we're recommending the tax rate stay the same at point three four, three, four, six, four. The uh next thing was the State Highway Fund. It has been raised twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars from last year. The state police aid, we haven't got anything back yet, last year we took a uh pretty good uh cut on that. Because we have, their reasoning was we have no crime. Uh so they, so they cut our funding on that, so we'll just have to wait and see where that is. Uh the proposed uh county tax equity is up twenty-one percent, uh which would be eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollar increase from last year. Uh the town budget miscellaneous funds decreased uh from two hundred and seventy thousand to a hundred and ninety-four thousand. And the main reason for that is the interest funds uh going down. The budget general fund uh is estimated to increase about six percent or a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So y'all can, you can read all that and more in detail over the next week. Uh let's see, stormwater management, there's not gonna be, that's gonna stay, remain steady, uh because we, the the same fees are put out there every year. Uh per our ordinance, uh the water fund uh should be, there'll be uh predicted a decrease of eleven percent. And this is uh mainly because of um. And that was with no increase in water rates. Uh so that was uh, that's how we uh budgeted that so far. Uh the sewer uh rates uh should stay about the same, and that's with a three percent uh increase that we. Is what was in the current uh budget and what was voted on last year. Uh for this town staff, it's recommended a three percent uh cola raise. Uh also in for merit increases, the same as last year, a one to three percent uh. Increase based on uh employees' performance. So our overall budget for salaries would be increased by five point eight percent. Uh in the expenses. Uh the general fund expenses for capital fund transfers by eighty-five thousand or three point five percent. Uh the capital fund transfers for F Y twenty-six would be roughly a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred. The budget for stormwater management uh has increased from eight thousand to fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred, so that's a pretty big increase there. Uh the water fund uh expenses has increased from seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the uh sewer budget increased from one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand to one million. Uh one hundred and ninety-three thousand, so that's uh, that's just the uh, the budget in a brief snapshot. Uh please take your time for the next week as quick as you can, if you can get the town staff any. Uh questions you might have or anything you need to have clarified. For for clarification, please get it back to us and we'll do the best to get it out to you as quick as we can. So any questions for town staff?
Um yeah, a question, the water revenue, uh according to our budget book, we should be. What's the number, we should have money left over. With revenue and expenses, the way I'm reading that, or no?
Let me pull it back up, but I believe with the draft, the way that it's done, I think it was about forty-five thousand. Access between revenue, all revenues.
But also keep in mind that we do not budget depreciation expense, and at the end of the day, that will also come out and then you will be in the negative.
Are we talking about F Y twenty-five ending or F Y twenty-six?
No.
Your your question.
Oh wait, right, our budget should decrease overall this year. No, I I was talking about F Y twenty-six.
Okay, I just think, I just want to make sure I understand your question.
Correct, we were on the same page there, right, uh Kim, that we were talking about the same, F Y twenty-six?
Yes, F Y twenty-six, we're at forty-two thousand, four hundred.
For the operating budget, yes. Okay, and um. The depreciation fund, I know we had talked about that a couple of times, is that something we have not factored in? Or we have been factoring in, or we need to factor it?
So depreciation is a non-cash item, so it's not, it's not budgeted in your operating budget. However, it's accounted for in your audit and it comes off your bottom line.
So do we have a depreciation fee within the water bill right now?
depreciation fee, no.
It's a maintenance fee?
No.
Nothing?
No, for depreciation.
No maintenance, there's one called maintenance?
Yeah, there's a maintenance fee.
And where does the maintenance, you go to?
It's in your revenue, under your revenue, on your budget.
So originally, I I thought I heard that that was supposed to be for depreciation, but we could never quite get there. Because there was always expenses to be paid.
No, the maintenance charges have always gone in your operating budget.
Oh.
Yeah, it's um, it's uh right under your utility charge on page twenty-six.
Okay. Alright, so we don't, we don't have a way to really to budget for depreciation as of yet, we're just taking it.
Correct, correct, okay.
Um. Also. I know our. Water rate study um took into account five percent inflation for operating expenses. And with our budgeted salaries, we're over that initial five percent um and. Something that's not a question for now, but there are, some of the colas look higher than what we have in the code. So that would be a question for May. Or I'm sorry, merit, merit is higher than what we have in our code.
Correct, because the mayor's has um recommended two increases for two staff members above. What the, the one to three on merit and the cola is, based off of their years here and their experience. And so he's asking for an additional raise for two employees. Um it was just captured in the merit chart, it probably should have been its own additional percentage.
Yeah, that was very confusing, alright, so, because I know it also says in the code, code with funds available.
For the merit.
Correct, correct, so um. We'll talk about that too, as far as, do we have funds available to cover that if we're struggling in the water fund, so. Um are there any other questions as far as the budget overview?
No.
No? Okay, moving on. Um. Ms. Wollitz, I know you said one of these was going to be postponed, I thought it was the one on schools, the school fee, but that is not correct, which one is the? Should be number two, okay, so originally in our agenda, we had for consideration, adoption of the resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash oh one R. Declaring the official intent of the town of Emmonsburg to reimburse from tax exempt bonds. Uh expenditures to be incurred with respect to the North Seton Avenue Waterline Replacement and Green Street Project prior to the issuance of debt. But that is not ready to go, we have not heard back, correct, M D V, M D E has to re, finish reviewing it. Uh so we are uh postponing that agenda item and moving on to number three. Discussion and consideration of approval of ordinance twenty-five dash oh eight, amending title fourteen, adequate public facilities.
Hi, um so before I get started, on page thirty-two of the packet, there needs to be a correction made. Um it's, it says um under local school mitigation fee, uh it says hu- a hundred percent. It should be one hundred fifteen percent of state rated capacity.
I'm sorry, you said one hundred and fifteen percent?
Yes.
Okay, and that's in the bold?
Uh yes.
Okay.
So this is, this ordinance uh proposes updates to the town, title fourteen of the town code. Also known as that equipped public facilities ordinance. And it focuses on how the town evaluates public school capacity when reviewing new residential developments. And um introduces a new mitigation option to help ensure that growth aligns with the availability of. Public services, particularly schools. Um so under current ordinance, the planning commission determines whether a school can handle a new development by. Using a school adequacy test conducted by the Freddie County Board of Education. And uh this test looks at the current and projected enrollment uh at the elementary, middle and high school. Um that would serve the development, and if any of these schools are projected to exceed one hundred percent of state rated capacity. As a result of a project, then the test fails and then the develop, development cannot proceed unless mitigation steps are taken. And right now, the only mitigation option in the ordinance is is to request redistricting, which can be a pretty complex. Um often slow process and it's completely controlled by the um county board of education. And that results in developments being um delayed and stopped altogether. So to address this issue, this ordinance, uh this new tool, local school mitigation fee in section fourteen point zero four. One one hundred, uh this fee allows developers to contribute money to the town, which will then be used to fund school related improvements. Such as, you know, expanding facilities, upgrading infrastructure, um things like that. And. As mentioned in section fourteen, oh four, one hundred. as mentioned in section 14, oh, four, one hundred C, three, the funds will get, well, they'll go into a dedicated interest bearing account and can only be used for school projects that serve Emmitsburg residents. And the fee would be established by a resolution, a sample copy of which was passed out earlier tonight and emailed to you earlier this afternoon. It, it shows the possible fees that would be collected from developers on page three of that resolution. The sample resolution. And it also states that the field increased by 3% every year. And that fee would be, you know, established by a resolution by the board every year. So with the new ordinance, if a development passes the school adequacy test and it's under 120% capacity, the developer can to, you know, choose to pay this mitigation fee instead of, you know, redistricting and building improvements. And the updated ordinance also adjusts the standard for what is considered adequate for school capacity. So instead of a hard limit at 100%, the school will now be considered adequate up to 115% of state rated capacity. So this gives a little more flexibility in managing growth. And if the mitigation option is chosen, the developer will have to sign a formal agreement with the town and the fee must be paid at the time of the final plat recordation. So basically, these updates should give a little more manageable, predictable path forward. And we've been working with Mr. Eric Soder, who's here today. He's a principal at Rogers Consulting and has a lot of experience with APFO. See if you have any questions and ask me or him.
Yes, I have lots of questions. Should we? Yeah. Just for a microphone.
There we go, just for a little bit of background, I am a town resident of Pembroke, Pembroke Woods. And I know some of you, just with time on the planning commission and certainly worked with Mr. Hoover for many, many decades. I'm a certified land planner with Rogers Consulting, a land use planning firm, soil engineering firm. But prior to my time as a, in the private sector, a number of years, too many to count in the public sector, including well over a decade as the planning director for Frederick County. So crafting the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance and developing these different mitigation options, I worked with accounting on, worked with the city of Frederick a few years ago. So when Najila reached out to me, just for some additional insight, because I understand it, you have Emmett Ridge is one of the developments that's kind of sitting out there in limbo and how to craft a, an APFO to allow it to move forward. I understand that there's general consensus that the town wants to see that development completed and how it could be crafted in such a way that, you know, that would provide the runway for that, that additional amount. So there's two things that are in front of you. It's the increasing that, you know, the threshold from 100, 115%. And while that seems like a lot, there are a couple of things to consider. A number of APFOs, Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, I'll, you know, try to limit the acronyms. A number of them have 110% as a threshold. Frederick County used to have that, now it is 100%. Other jurisdictions do have 110% as it. So you can make that decision whether you want to go to 115 or something less. But the idea is giving a little bit of a runway for a little bit of additional development that could occur instead of having that hard stop at 100%. And a little bit of background on Emmitsburg Elementary, currently it sits at a state rated capacity of 225 seats. At one time, it was over 300 seats. Even in 2014, it was over 300 and it went to 316. And then it wasn't until 2020 that it dropped down to the 225 state rated capacity that there is today. And all those are, you know, well and good programmatic decisions that FCPS has to make, Frederick County Public Schools for various programs that they're dealing with and just how the schools are, you know, utilized differently than they maybe were 10 years ago. But the reality is there was, you know, a significant amount of capacity on paper not too long ago. So again, increasing the threshold from 100 to something else, and right now in your proposal, it's 115, gives that additional runway for that. The mitigation fee is probably something that's more forward looking. Working with the town on the comp plan, you have the potential for developments coming in. And what that does is allows for the town to forward plan for that and also pull back some or acquire some additional funding from developers as they're coming in. And how it works in the county and the city of Frederick is, you know, if you're over that certain threshold, the developer would have the option to pay that mitigation fee. And I can certainly explain how the fees were developed on that one sheet that Najila passed out. And, you know, pay for it at the school level that you fail. The reality is anything in Emmitts, it's going to pass the middle school and the high school. There's plenty of capacity at both Thermont Middle and Cattockton High School, but you're going to fail in Emmitsburg Elementary, so you would pay that fee at the elementary school level. And if it's the same numbers that the county has, it's roughly $10,400 per dwelling unit, per single family detached. And it's important there, that there are developers paying this on a per dwelling unit and not a per person that they generate. Because 100 units subdivision generates actually less than 100 pupils. So they're paying the higher fee, they're paying it on per dwelling unit, because that's how the fee is structured. The other key item, just in terms of fee structure, and then I'll stop and see if there's any questions. You know, a developer already has to pay an impact fee at the county when they, you know, build a permit or when they build a house. The single family detached currently is about $18,000 for a single family detached house. That goes to the county, the county can use that money wherever and whenever they want to. And, and they grab a pot of money and they, you know, use it for all their capital projects. What this fee is and what other municipalities, like the city of Frederick, they collect it, they hold it. You don't disperse it until you, you know, work with and kind of, you know, shake the tree. And we, you know, we go collectively as a community to the county and FCPS and say, hey, we've collected this money, we've got a project moving on. We would like to see, you know, we're going to, you know, put a million dollars or $2 million that we've collected. We want you to, you know, now advance a project in our jurisdiction. Obviously, that project is going to be an improvement to Emmitsburg Elementary, that's what's needed. I'm trying to think if you have a question.
Coming from my experience with the, the school board, what's the mechanism for the transfer of that money to the school board?
So that is purely up to the town, just like, so the city of Frederick, as a, as a recent example, you know, city Frederick's been collecting their own mitigation fees with various developments that, you know, pass or fail. You know, some, some pass in some areas, some fail, some fail at all three levels. So they have a pot of money. And with the recent push for like the, the enhanced pre-K, that's, you know, that is required. They've gone to the Board of Ed and said, okay, we've got some additional money, we know that you're tight. We're going to give you, you know, X amount of dollars, you know, and talking about millions of dollars. We want you to put it like in Hillcrest and, and Weider and some of these city schools, because that's where they're focusing on, and that's what we would do. And that's why it's really important that the ordinance is structured that this is money that stays here, stays in the town, and you as a body decide how you're going to expend that. And obviously, the ideal thing is to expend it where it's needed, which is on Emmitsburg Elementary, because that's, you know, where it's failing and the intent. And that would be the intent is to use that money as it comes in, as well as the impact fee money that they have to pay. And you show a package of, hey, county, you're getting money from the developer, we've got some additional money. Let's get this project moving forward.
Now, I know you mentioned, I think we all understand the space in elementary school and even larger spaces in the middle school and high school. Since the middle school and high school are outside of town districts, but are served, that serve our residents. If the point in time came, under the current language, could we also transfer money to the, for middle and high school?
You could, and I believe that's how it's written, it's, it's what serves the town residents. And yeah, in Thermoat Middle and Cattockton High. But as a, as a citizen, and you know, if you were a developer that was putting money into it, because you were, you know, starting to like pay that fee, I would imagine they would, I mean, the ideal thing would be put in towards Emmitsburg Elementary. I think we all agree that that needs an upgrade, it needs some additions. And, you know, the Frederick County Public Schools back in 2020 did a limited renovation study for all the North County elementary schools. And there is a project that's roughly eight or nine million, it's probably, you know, maybe 10 million now after four years. But it's like a project like that, people think it's not doable. But it's doable if you had a development, development in the future that came along with the amount of impact fees that the county is going to get with the amount of mitigation fee that the town could get. And you package that up and say, you know, we have a program. And I'd be happy to work with your staff to kind of outline that more in terms of what those dollars would look like and things like that. But that's the intent, yeah.
What is Emmitsburg Elementary's current capacity?
Current capacity is after the March, it's probably like 98%. I mean, I think they have 225 seats and the capacity is like 218. So it's, the, the amount of room you have is, you know, 25 houses or something. You don't, you know, I don't believe you have enough. And, and just full disclosure, I'm not working on Emmett Ridge or whatever, but I don't believe you have enough runway to permit Emmett Ridge without increasing it above the 100% capacity. Sitting there at like 98 and something like that.
I thought I heard we were over capacity, unless we lost some students.
Yeah, I mean, I just looked at the March, they, they have quarterly enrollments. And the March enrollment, I thought it was either 218 or 222. I mean, it was under, it was, it was just barely. And I would say it's at capacity, because it's, there's maybe five to six seats, something like that.
Right, and I know this is, this is a tricky wiki, because we want to bring in development, but the way FCPS is structured, as we know, like once you hit over capacity, it still could be 10, 12, 15 years before any improvements or a new building may come.
Right.
And then where there's a, another issue that we have when we, Ms. Willetts, I spoke with the Director of Operations at FCPS, where he said, we basically don't have enough room for a new school and we would need to find another land.
Yeah.
Because of the stream, I think, across, it kind of limits the space. And you need, I think, 16 acres for a new school.
Yeah, they prefer 12 to 15, but they can certainly do it unless.
Yeah.
No, you're, so you're absolutely right. And, you know, the reality for Emmitsburg Elementary, it's an, it's an, an modest addition. You know, when, when Thermont went through their limited, because they got funded for that limited renovation. And when they did that, and they dealt with like the open classrooms, they actually found capacity. Meaning when they made the renovations, there was actually additional capacity that was created. That would be the hope is here, is not necessarily have to rebuild the entire school, but at least have a modest addition that, you know, could provide what is needed for whatever the immediate future development is, like in the next 10 years. You know, to accommodate that. And the other thing in terms about timing is what's important that Najila talked about is this fee is paid at recordation plat and not at building permit. So the impact fee, which is paid at the county, is paid at building permit, which is obviously much closer to when the development comes online. Usually developments are within 90 days, building permit, builder crews going out there and they're building, and then you're turning it over. Recordation plat is at least six months, perhaps even a year in advance. And that was, that's how the county has structured it. And city of Frederick is have the developer pay for it early, so you can start collecting that money early. Start, you know, kind of getting a sense of how much is coming in each year. And that way, when we, you know, collectively go to the, you know, FCPS and the county, you have a, you know, a much earlier look at, hey, we've got X million dollars, we haven't even started, you know, things like that. So paying it early is important in terms of recordation plat, it's much earlier than the impact fee. And then it's important to note that developer still has to pay the impact fee, this is not in lieu of that.
Do the impact fees and the school fees end up getting passed down to the person who buys the house?
Yeah, I mean, generally they do, yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it does affect affordability for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that was something when we were talking about increasing connection fees was, do we want to increase?
Yeah.
That for
And that's, yeah, it's always a balance, but if it means you can bring on a certain amount of development and you're, you know, can get a certain amount of, you know, X million dollars, that's going to resolve that issue. And some of that issue is issue that is legacy issues like we're dealing with. So there's a, there is a balance. But yeah, in, in general, those, you know, developer can't necessarily, builder can't absorb, you know, the entirety of that. So a lot of those fees do get pulled out.
So we don't have any school fees currently?
I don't believe you have your own school fee, yeah.
Do we know of other municipalities or towns in Frederick County who don't have school fees?
Don't have.
I'm just wondering if we're the last standing.
Oh, no, there are a few more that don't have. I mean, the city of Frederick does, and they've been using this, you know, the school fee. Other than Frederick, I don't know, Brunswick has been looking at it, but the last two developments that came in there are age restricted, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Your housing or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, 55 and better, yes. And, and just so for the fee, so you know how it's structured, that fee is directly from the county, those are the county fees. And the way they were, you know, put together and structured is the impact fee that I talked about covers, it's, there's a rational nexus that the county can only charge a certain amount. All this crazy formula. And that is cover the county share. The remaining amount comes from the state, the state share. And when this development impact fee was developed, or this mitigation fee was developed, the idea was, okay, developer, you have to pay the county share at building permit. We're going to charge you effectively the state share, but much earlier. So we're getting 100% of the money upfront. Now, the county still gets reimbursed each year. So the idea was get the money early, get a project in, and then the county gets, you know, the benefit, even though it's a couple of years later, because that's how the state board of public works. You know, they reimburse the county over time. But effectively, that's how that, that fee is developed. It's roughly the state share of what a cost of a seat is kind of thing. So a lot of formulas behind it, but I mean, that's effectively what it is.
Yep. Did we, was there any discussion with our local Emmitsburg's principal as far as how this would impact them? Because essentially, we'd be, we'd be approving them to go over capacity.
Yes, I did meet with her and she doesn't have, see a problem. I think, what did they say, the Emmett Ridge projection is what, six students?
Yeah.
That's what they're predicting.
What's at 48?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With how many single family houses?
48.
Yeah, so that's one thing I
I have a concern about, yeah.
Yeah, because the county's projection is always very low.
Yeah, so it's, it's low in Emmitsburg and I'm
It's low everywhere.
It's low.
For Oakdale and it's, they always got
So Oakdale and, you know, the, the growth areas, Oakdale, Lincoln or Abana are generally higher than the county averages. It is hard to get your head wrapped around the numbers. And the easiest way to think about it is, because everyone's like, there's no way. But think of the county as a whole, we roughly have about 46, 47,000 students in Frederick County Public Schools. But we have over 100,000 dwelling units in the county. So right off the bat, just in general, a rule of thumb is every home produces half of a student. Now, that half is unbroken out, because some go to elementary, middle and high school. In the growth areas, when things are popping and things like that, it is much higher. The county looks at the rates every, every two years and updates it based on GIS information and everything. Emmitsburg, why it's low is because you have the influence of Mother Seaton School. And it really acts as, you know, a second elementary school and to some degree, middle school, because it pulls a fair amount of students. Yes, a certain amount of the 360, I think, students come from outside, but there are a fair amount of students that come that are just within the town limits or the 21727 zip code. So that's why our pupil generation rate is lower than the county average.
So they're estimating six students off of 48 homes, but there might be more than six students and they're hoping they're going to go to Mother Seaton.
It's not that they're hoping. So when Frederick County Public Schools and the planning department, county planning department, do their pupil generation rates, they do it every couple of years and they match through GIS, because they know exactly where every home is. And then they match it, because they know exactly where every student is and they layer that information. And then they can put a geo fence around it and say, Emmitsburg Elementary, how many homes, how many students? And that's your rate. So what's happened in our zip code effectively is a fair amount of students. Families choose to send their kids some other seating. It's a community school, it's kind of, again, acted as that second elementary school. So it's not that they're guessing, it's just, that's the fact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they're at capacity too, from what I understand.
Less, I think, the comp plan, there was, they have like 460 capacity and so they, they have available class, at least what we found out during the comp plan.
Mother seat?
Yeah, but
Oh, because I'm sorry, because I, they told me that they needed to break out for more secondary, but they didn't have any more rooms available. Go ahead.
How about the new, the civil school, which is now a base school too?
Oh, the charter school?
Yeah.
So some of the kids from 217.
Yeah, yeah. And so they have their own people generation rate, just like when Sebelisba was a traditional school and, you know, so are they have a people generation rate based on Emmitsburg Elementary attendance area. That's how they do it. Not, I use the 21727 broadly. Yeah. So.
So Frederick City, I understand doing this, I mean, the size of Frederick City and the number of schools and the number of students, I understand their, their potential relationship with the county to make this work well.
Right.
But I'm more curious as to other municipalities, Woodsboro or
This, Woodsboro doesn't have any growth moving. I mean, really, there's
Bill or New Market.
Walkersville is not growing, New Market. So New Market, I don't believe they even have an APFO. What they have done is use their annexation agreement, because during annexation, you have a lot more latitude with developments in terms of proffers and things like that. So they've used their annexation agreements, because that's the most of the growth that's come in there were recent annexations and they use that tool to, and I believe they have, even though they don't have the APFO, they have, I believe effectively got additional dollars for that.
I was gonna say, so they don't have the APFO, but they have the funding mechanism.
Yeah, because the annexations give you latitude, but this gives you, and you would still have that latitude, even if the annexation came in, it doesn't preclude you from asking more, you know?
Curious more than how, how Frederick County is working with the municipalities as far as joining monies together.
Yeah.
Potentially, I guess that's called fast track.
Right.
And then it's first case would
Yeah.
Be called fast track, but, but something to get it on track to do something.
Right.
How, how
How that works. So it's
Well, as the county working with municipalities to, to come together and
Yep.
And see a plan through.
It's worked out pretty well in, you know, that with City of Frederick, they have
Quarter conception though, because Frederick's so much larger and
Yeah, but they still have the pot of money that they're trying to
Probably a lot bigger.
Pull, pull edition, yeah, to pull additional with, yeah.
Small municipalities who's going to have smaller amounts of money than Frederick's.
Yeah.
Will have something, you know, we're
Really, there's no other growth. I mean, honestly, there's no other growth other than Brunswick. Brunswick's the only other municipality that has really anything on the books. I mean, literally.
There's growth everywhere.
No, but in the, in the municipalities, in the, in, I know there is, I mean, but in the proper unincorporated county there is, but incorporated municipalities, there really is nothing in terms of, you know, Thurmont has their own issues in terms of some annexations and pulling back and forth. Woodsboro doesn't have anything. Walkersville just went through their comp plan. They don't have anything. Myers from Middletown. So you have New Market and they have a fair amount with Smith Klein property, but those were again, proffers and they pulled a lot of that same money through their annexation.
Is it possible to see a comparison of what those other
Been growing like weed for decades.
Yeah, Brunswick Crossing, that's been on the books for a while and the most recent ones are too age restricted. But yeah, I can work with
Yeah, it would be interesting to see what, what the other municipalities do. And I know like as far as FCPS, they're going to prioritize the building. I don't know if anyone's following, but we're in a budget crisis on FCPS as well. And we will be for a while, but any of the there's a new school in the works that is yet unnamed, but
School 41.
Yeah, school 41. But other than that, where the improvement projects tend to go is in the areas of highest growth.
Yep.
Tends to be, you know,
Yeah, Urbana, Lincoln, or, yeah. And a lot of those areas were areas that developers are paying this fee that we're talking about, because that's where the money's coming in, in the county saying, hey, we've, hey, yeah, but that is, but they're saying, we've got this extra money, let's do it. So the goal here would be, you know, this is probably, the fee is probably not going to affect the Emmett Ridge, because if, if you increase the threshold above 100 to some degree, to me, it's forward thinking for future annexations that you have on the comprehensive plan. And it at least gives collectively us time to kind of figure out what that strategy is and start working with you know, Board of Ed, FCPS and the county to say, hey, we've got this long-term plan. You know, even if you approved an annexation today, it's going to be five or six years before we even saw, you know, a shovel in the ground. So there's a lot of runway and a lot of things that we can do collectively to start kind of galvanizing and say, we have a strategy and start putting, putting the numbers down to say, you're going to collect, I mean, even Emmett Ridge, Emmett Ridge, you're gonna, you know, developer's going to have to stroke a check for about a million dollars in impact fees. I can tell you that million dollars is probably going south. Because we don't have a project here. And that's the idea is start to pull these things together with your comp plan, with your ordinances and saying, we want to accept some level of growth. We have these things in place.
But this will put about $400,000. Emmett Ridge will put about $400,000 this
If, if they, if, if they got triggered by the fee, but, but if you increase the threshold to above, they, they may not have to pay the fee, but this is probably for a larger development that, you know. But you're right.
They may not see it for, for, for that, for
Right. They'll have to pay the impact fee, but not the mitigation.
So what would trigger the impact fee coming back up this way? Are you saying with the school fee would trigger the impact fee to be put? They would be motivated to put
Well, I, I think what would, I think what the idea would be is if we had development, if we had enough money that we could package up and say, you know, here's a pot of X million dollars. Combined with what kind of impact fees that would come along. I mean, to give an example, in the, the comp plan in the pipeline, there's roughly 500 units on the two larger potential developments. Not everything in, in, you know, collectively, but you know, 500 unit subdivision would generate $10 million in impact fees to the county. But it would also generate about $5 million to the town in mitigation fees that you would hold on. That's where you would package that up and say, there's effectively $15 million coming out of, you know, the town. FCPS, you need to do something about it and that
Five that we control.
Five that you would control. Yeah. Under that, yeah. And again, that's like, it's future. It's probably multiple years how that kind of comes on, but looking at your comprehensive plan in terms of what's realistic over the next, you know, 10, 15 years, that's probably what you're going to see. So.
My concern is, is
Yeah.
How, how nice does the county play with us?
Yeah, yeah.
Five million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but to the county and to the school program, maybe it is.
Yeah, it, it's not going to build you a new school. I mean, elementary schools are 45 to 55 million these days. But I don't think that's the ask. I think, yeah.
It may do somewhat of an expansion, but not much.
Yeah.
So you said like the two developments waiting in the wings, what, 500 units? More or less, is that what you said?
Yeah. What was the question again?
The, you said the developments that are waiting in the wings that could potentially
Yeah, the ones in the, in the development pipeline and the comprehensive plan, it's roughly 500 units, you know, could, you know, we're just looking at what was put in the comp plan and just to give you an idea, you know?
Right, right. I know. It's, it's, it's very much like this catch 22.
It is.
Because in order for an expansion to happen, you have to be over capacity.
And not just a little, but you have to really be at it.
A lot, like, yeah, because down in the Oakdale district in order to get that new school, I, you know, elementary school kids wearing classes of 38 at a time.
Yeah.
Which is astronomical.
Yeah.
Right? So, and I don't believe their FCPS, I could be wrong, we need to fact check this. Or I don't believe they're allowing external portables anymore. I think the ones at Emmitsburg were pulled back because of the whole security issue.
Yeah.
So then it begs the question in an open school with an overcrowdedness, like how?
Yeah.
Like, are we setting ourselves up after two, three developments that that poor principal's going to be like?
Many arguments already.
Yeah. I, I think the approach would be to work sooner rather than later. And we have that as a strategy in the comp plan to work with FCPS to identify what that was in that limited renovation study that in 2020. And is there anything else that can be in there that we would ensure that there would be additional capacity and start running numbers to, you know, make sure there's enough capacity to accommodate? You know, whether, you know, what we foresee as in the, you know, foreseeable future.
Even, even walls, if you have more kids, it's going to be huge because, because of the noise.
Yeah.
I don't have like those.
Yeah.
Is so depending on whether we do, sorry, I can't see. 100, 110, 115, whatever it may be, do we? Are we able to see how that plays with our potential developments coming down? Because you said it's possible that Emmett Ridge may not trigger.
I mean, I'd be happy to.
I don't think it will.
Yeah.
What he just said, I agree with you. If it does hit, it's going to be very, very one or two people.
Yeah. I mean, and even if you use the county, highest county rate, like the average county rate, it double it and you're at 12 students, you know? And even if you went from 115, but you weren't comfortable, went to 110, because it's, it's like, okay. I think 110 still gives you the runway to allow Emmett Ridge to move forward. But it'll then hold back a larger one and a larger development would have to start paying into the fee. So maybe that's the approach that you take is look at the, if, if that's, you know, the desire is because Emmett Ridge's been on the books, I know there's desire to move it. Figure out what that sweet spot is. So it's not so high and I'd be happy to work with your staff to run the numbers. And if 115 seems a little high, it probably could be lowered. And that way you're capturing more. If a larger development came in, you're going to capture more of that. That might be a way to get it to a little bit of comfort level.
So this talks about school. I don't know. Is it clear enough that it's talked, is it public school or is it schools? Because I mean, is it mother seat? Eligible for funds? Or is it clear that
I'll let your attorney answer that.
So it keeps saying school, it doesn't say which, unless I'm missing.
Yeah.
School mitigation versus
So just
Frederick County post school.
Just quickly. It's a good question. I mean, I'm looking at on page 35.7 under use of funds. Public school construction. Is, would be my, my quick and dirty answer to that, but good question.
That was a quick and dirty answer. Before you sit down.
Here I am.
On page 34.
Yeah.
Under C1, towards the very bottom of the paragraph. Should that, should it say nothing however, or noting however? At the very, it's like one, two, three, the third line up from the last paragraph and oh wait, no, I'm sorry. It's number two.
Okay.
I wrote over.
Sorry, I'm still not finding it. Nothing however?
Yes.
Okay, well, you read it.
That's it.
Projects is more than 120. Capacity at the time of year. Noting however, should be noting. I agree.
All right. Okay. All right. So, thank you. This is a lot to take in. So Commissioner Turnquist. If the school is at capacity, 100% capacity, will Frederick County approve the building plans?
Answer that. So you, the town is autonomous and you're planning and zoning. So you have the trigger in terms of allowing for development or not through APFO, adequate public facilities ordinance, not that Frederick County Public Schools. So all each year, you know, the county and all the respective municipalities have different thresholds. As mentioned, some don't have adequate public facilities at all. So it's entirely in your, in your hands in terms of what those thresholds could be.
And the fee would not kick in until the capacity reached 115%?
Well, that's how it's currently written.
But at 120%, there'd be no option to pay a fee.
Well, so what, how it's written and how it's been applied is when you run an APFO test, you run it for like three or years, it's larger developments, maybe more. This 120% is something both the city and the county have in there. And if you are sitting there at the time of the test and if the development is over 120, they don't want you to attest. Because they don't want you to, to use that option to, it was felt like, okay, it's over 120, we won't want to, whatever, even start it. It could be under 120 at the, at year one, maybe goes to then 115 and maybe goes to 122 or 125 in the last year. That was okay. And that's why it says noting however, that the projects resulting APO tests may exceed that threshold during it. So you may be slightly over it or over it in one of those years, but they just didn't want you to start it at yeah, if it was already at that 120. So that's language that we just mimicked that the county uses and City Frederick use. So that's how that would work.
Yeah, I guess one of my concerns is to charge, you know, it would be a $10,000 fee for a single family home. You know, we've talked about not raising app connection fees because we didn't want to chase, chase developers away. But under this proposal, we would ask the developers to pay a school fee, not only to Frederick County, but a duplicate fee to Emmitsburg.
Yeah.
You know, the town's not in the business of building schools or renovating schools. There was language. Page 36. Where it talks about what the money can be used for, use of funds, the town may appropriate funds for, from the account at its discretion for public school construction improvements, including but not limited to expansions, infrastructure upgrades, blah, 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 blah. Or other educational enhancement projects serving or intended to serve town residents. That last part's kind of vague. I mean, it's kind of opens it up beyond public schools.
Yeah.
In terms of what the money can be used for.
Yeah. And you can certainly narrow that down, I'm sure.
So I, I do have a concern about, you know, raise housing cost. If the developers have to pay an additional fee, the fee is duplicated from Frederick County. And, you know, we're not in the school business. And even if we work and say, say to Frederick County, hey, we have 500,000 in this account. What's that really going to buy? And Frederick County would still have to approve it.
Yeah, it's Frederick County would still have to approve the, the actual construction project for certain. Yeah, certainly.
Right.
It just, in my experience with fee is you know, this isn't a fee on existing residents. And I think that should be made clear if you did, you know, you know, move forward, forward on it. It would be for new development and developers would be well aware of it. I mean, they're well aware of it in the other jurisdictions that they're in and they're, they're choosing to move forward with it. And there is a certain point that it does get too costly, but it just, you know, they have to balance out what all those fees are. But at least it's a, a fee that is for future potential and people would know coming in, you know, okay, that's what the price is and you're not saddling it on existing residents. You know, that's one way to look at it.
It would, it would I, I go back and forth, having been working for FCPS and working in an overcrowded school. I, I know the challenges of that. And then with, but at the same time, it would be great to have money to build walls, but then again, how do we get on that priority list when we're way up north? So I see both sides. I would, I would be interested to hear more of a comparison from the other municipalities as far as which ones have a school fee or don't have a school fee in place. And if they do, what do they have as their capacity? Do they have it at 110, 115, 120? I don't know. Sounds like that can be flexible. And then if they have the fee, what is that fee that they impose? So that we can kind of compare to see what others are doing. I know there's not a lot of
Yeah.
others that are, are growing, but then knowing that we have developments coming. It's probably really hard to project, but if we know we have a development that might have 500 units using that same county formula. Can we then anticipate what this would look like with our upcoming development so that we have a little bit more of a clearer picture?
Yep, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with Angela on that.
Yeah, because I don't want to say yes or no. I just think we need more information.
Oh, I agree. I think this is a good back, you know, under, trying to understand it and it'll take some time and I'd be happy to work with Angela.
Developments in your comp plan, you know.
Yeah.
Are they going to be next year? Are they going to be 20 years out? You don't know.
Right, right.
They're going to be down the road a ways.
Right, right. Sure. But I mean, like then we could say, even if it, whether it is 20 years from now, if this was in place.
If you have the tool in place before, yeah.
What does that look like? How much? What does that look like? How much money would that bring in? And then possibly the 500 units go in somewhere, you know, what is the estimated impact to the elementary school? So realistically, we can get a better.
Yep.
A better picture.
Yeah.
And it's, it's all good and. You can find pros and cons in theory both ways.
Absolutely.
I just, I think I need a clearer picture. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
Yeah, and we can provide, because I think it'd be helpful because I totally understand. There's always concern with the pupil generation and I will, I can give the numbers, we'll give the numbers for Emmitsburg as they are. But we can also use the county rate, which is much higher, but at least it'll give you like a very, like a conservative estimate, like, oh, my gosh, what if everybody didn't go to? So I think we can give you that just so you can kind of get a sense of, even, even in a conservative estimate. If, you know, none of the new students that were generated went to other schools, what would the impact be? What would the impact be? Because I think that, that's, that's good from a planning purpose. So I'll be happy to work with you on that.
And do we know? Let's say in the future, however many years down the road. There is money. To put in expansion that. For Emmitsburg Elementary, do we know if there's room on that?
Yeah.
Property to do so.
Yeah, and I think those are the, some of the dialogues that'd be good. We can, I'd be happy to be part of that with. FCPS and Mr. Leebo and no one well, so.
Yeah, because if we have all this money and then they're like, oh, there's no room for.
Exactly.
Kind of shot ourselves some.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it would be nice to have that.
Yep.
Piece of the puzzle too.
For sure. Yep, agreed.
All right.
Okay, so are we, is there direction or consensus to? Postpone until we have further information?
Yeah, I think we put it off. Let's gather the information on that, get the, some more numbers behind it and then take, move forward at that point.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and can we? And one more thing.
No problem.
Can we play with the numbers for capacity as far as? Is there, do we know if anyone has a hundred percent capacity already factored in? Probably not as their threshold or does it start at like one oh five, one ten? One fifteen for other? As you said, we could do one ten, we could do one.
Yeah, I can, we can provide that chart to show you what one oh five and one oh ten would look like. In terms of how much of a runway, I mean. But one ten would certainly still allow Emmett Ridge to move forward.
Right.
Probably not going to allow a whole lot of others, but we can.
But you're looking to see which municipalities have which.
Which.
Capacity now. Is that what you're asking for?
Oh, no, I was just, because we have, I'm sorry, you said we did have flexibility over what we want to put for the capacity percentage, right?
Sure.
So like. If we lower it. Like, if we lower it, what is the impact? Does that mean we're stopping Emmett Ridge from coming in because we want to be aware of that? Or if we increase it?
I mean, one ten. Should increase the capacity to around two hundred and fifty to from two twenty-five. So that's additional twenty-five students. So even at the. Most conservative estimate of forty-eight units. I don't believe Emmett Ridge would stop at one ten. Yeah. But we'll confirm that and put it in writing that way. So.
Okay.
I don't think that's gonna, I think that something like that would allow you to continue to move forward Emmett Ridge. It would pull down. Or it would capture more of the developed, future developments.
Sure.
And any more dollars would come in and things like that. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Would you be able to provide the capacity numbers for the middle school and high school as well, just so we know what it is?
Yep, absolutely.
This time, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Middle school, there's like fifty-four percent capacity.
Oh, that's it?
Oh, yeah. Now, yeah, there's, that's a nine hundred seat and then high school, it's only at seventy some percent and it's a thousand. So there's.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot of capacity that's, yeah, so, but I will get you the exact numbers.
They were looking at like renting out entire wings of that, of, of the middle school because there's so much. Wow. Available.
We need to fill it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Yep.
Good discussion. Oh, was it? I didn't know that. Oh, maybe I didn't know that. Oh, okay.
It just changed.
They made it.
Made it bigger.
Made it bigger.
It never changed. Location.
Okay. Um. We don't, do we need a? Do we need an actual motion in order to table this? Or postpone it until we have more information?
If you're trying to give new direction, you might want to make some kind of. Clear direction what you're making, but you didn't make a motion to accept it, so.
Okay.
Some kind of clear direction in a consensus or motion or something, I would think.
I agree with that. I think it'd be a good idea. Particularly since you've asked for, for some things, I think it would just like solidify it.
Okay, so. Let's see if I can capture this. Is there a motion? To. Postpone. The adoption of resolution twenty-five or twenty twenty-five dash oh one R until. We have additional information, including. What is Emmitsburg? I'm sorry?
Just, just for clarification, this is, is an ordinance, not a resolution.
Oh, okay, that's not what it says on the agenda.
Right, but that, that's what it is, so.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll try that again. Is there a motion to postpone the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one R? No, wait, I'm looking at the wrong thing again. Let me try this again. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh eight, amending title fourteen, adequate public facilities. I was, I was getting there. Until we have additional information, including. How other municipalities are addressing the school fees. What is their percentage for? Over capacity, what is their current fee if they have one? Forgot everything that I said. Alternative. Thresholds. Did I capture that? Okay. Anyone? Okay, there are motions.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries five to zero. Thank you for your time tonight. It was very helpful. You. Gave us a lot of good food for thought and possibilities. All right, with that. For consideration. Number three, approval of policy twenty-five dash oh two, park pavilion reservation fees.
You have the policy in front of you. The current policy. Is seventy-five dollars per resident is the total rental fee. And then you get twenty-five dollars return. It's for the non-resident, the current policy is a hundred and twenty-five dollars in total rental, rental fee. And you get twenty-five dollars return. We want to, in conversation with the mayor. Do away with the, essentially the twenty-five dollar deposit and just charge a flat rental fee. Accounting wise, there are a lot of checks that are issued for the returned twenty-five dollars that are never cashed. It's becoming essentially an accounting nightmare.
Sure.
So we wanted to just kind of address it and change the policy to where it's just a flat rental fee for. Residents and non-residents, nonprofits would stay the same. They're required to submit a hundred and twenty-five dollars security deposit, but all their money would be returned if everything is left in good condition.
If they decide to. Cancel their, do they can, can someone cancel and then get their money back? Is that part of the nightmare?
It depends. Sometimes they get their money back if it's, it's weather dependent. Because a lot of times we have people that want to reserve it and then can't because you went, you, because somebody reserved it and then they canceled at the last minute. So then nobody gets to use it.
Okay.
That's typically not the issue. It's just when we issue the twenty-five dollars back, the checks just. They never get cashed.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then. It also says nonprofits, nonprofits are exempt. As long as they don't charge admission and the event is not a fundraiser. So if a nonprofit is doing a fundraiser, they would be charged.
They're still charged a hundred and twenty-five, but then it's all returned to them as long as everything is left in good working order. As long as they're a nonprofit with nonprofit status and they're not charging admission and there's, and it's considered a fundraiser.
And it's not considered.
And it's not considered a fundraiser, yes.
But if it is a fundraiser, but they don't charge admission, how's that for semantics?
Well, I would, I would then say if it's fundraiser, then it should be, they should be charged.
Okay. All right. Um, any? Questions? Comments? Is there?
It's just the problem of dealing with this achievement. I don't like any accountant having to deal with that from the accountant, just stale dated checks or just no fun. And that time is, we're going to spend twenty-five dollars in time just dealing with that.
Okay, well, in that case, is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept policy number P twenty-five dash zero two as presented. I'll second.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Nope. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on, number five. For consideration, approval of ordinance twenty-five dash oh six, amending title nine, public peace, peace morals and wealth, wealth, little welfare. To allow fortune telling in the town of Emmitsburg.
So one of Ms. Maloka's. Jobs that she was assigned by the board and the mayor was to go through the code and look for recommendations. To kind of update it and bring it into the twenty-first century. This was an easy one that she found currently in the code. It is unlawful for anyone. To accept any monies or gratuities for basically fortune telling. They're, they're allowed in most municipalities and if somebody would want to open a shop that. Has fortune telling, it would not be permitted at this point. We saw no reason to continue to, to not allow it. So this was one we just brought to the board.
Okay. Questions or comments? Is there a motion on the floor? Is there?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six. Zero six as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. And then moving on to number six, approval of bid for the DePaul Street paving project.
Yes, as part of the DePaul Street waterline project and then the upcoming sewer lateral and cleanout installation, DePaul Street. Is, is kind of rough right now. It was on the schedule to need paved, but in light of the recent projects. The entire street needs paved. So this was put out to bid. On March sixth, bids were due on March twenty-eighth and they were open on April first by myself, Ms. King and Mr. Click. It is to pave all of DePaul Street from North Seaton Avenue to the end of DePaul Street, the cul-de-sac. It was advertised on the town's website, MML Classifieds, E. Maryland Marketplace, and, and emails were sent to potential contractors. On page forty-three, you'll see we received. Five total bids. With the lowest bid going, being Huntsberry Brothers in the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty. They are the current contractor. For the waterline project as well as they were awarded the sewer lattes and sewer cleanouts. This project would be totally town funded with monies that are already in or will be added to the capital improvements project fund two.
And the reason is because they're already on site.
I would imagine since they're already on site, that they'll be able to complete the project quicker and in more cost effective manner.
Okay. Are the funds being added to the SIP as part of the FY twenty-six budget transfers?
Right now you have adequate funds in fund two to cover this project. There are additional. Trading projects that will need to be completed in FY twenty-six. And that money will be added in this current budget. In FY twenty-six.
Do we have an estimated completion date?
It won't be until they finish. They haven't started the sewer project yet, so it won't be until they finish the sewer project. Like, I don't remember how long they said that was going to take.
Are they coming the whole way up with the sewer ladder?
All of DePaul Street, yes.
Clear up towards church.
Yes. That paving pro, or the waterline project set to be done around June sixth, and I would imagine they'll start the sewer right after that.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept staff's recommendations. Paul Street paving project, the award to Huntsberry Brothers Corporation at the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Moving on to. Item seven, discussion of water rates again. As Mr. Eball said last time, it was a little contentious and reflecting on that meeting. I do believe that. Town staff and commissioners really are wanting the same thing. We want to be able to provide water to our residents. And we want to be able to do it in a way that's. The most feasible way economically. So as I went back. We've been discussing water rates since July twenty twenty-three, if not before that. And we've learned a lot since then. And. And I think in reflection of all the good conversations we've had, it was, it was pretty apparent that we have options and there are things that we talked about. During those workshops. That maybe we can, we can look at, so. We were told at the last meeting. And still with our budget that with no water rate increase, we'd bring in about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in utility charges. We'd be about nine, have a nine thousand dollar deficit once you factor in expenses. If we continue with a thirty-six percent, we would have roughly one point one million in revenue and about four hundred and thirty-four. Thousand left over. Our budget book for FY twenty-six still shows the, the two, our eight, eight hundred and forty thousand in utility charges, but it also takes in. Some of the other forms of revenue, which would bring it up to nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Correct, Kim? Am I saying that correctly? For FY twenty-six. And possibly about forty-two thousand, four hundred would be left over. So. That's, that's by adding in the other forms of, of revenue besides. Utility charges. So. When you look at. The meetings and our discussions and our workshops, we've, we've learned a lot. We've consulted with the USDA, we've consulted with auditors, Maryland Rural Water. We've looked to see what other people have done. And we, you know, in July twenty twenty-three, we learned from our auditors that. The town could subsidize the water fund with the general fund, although it's not recommended and it's not best practice. It can be, has been done. And we could vote to treat it as a loan and pay the money back or choose not to. That's something that Woodsboro did recently. In the last two years or so. And then in January twenty twenty-four, we learned that. Potentially all or some, some or all of the two hundred and fifty thousand money market, which is not currently allocated for any project or expense. Could be looked at down the road if we wanted to. I think. Um, I think we said that about year and a half ago, we, we, so that's something that we can consider. April twenty twenty four, uh, mayor and commissioners agree that we would like to see the thirty six percent water increase remain in place until the end of the second full year and then reduce to a small escalator after that. September twenty twenty four waters workshop, we learned from the USDA that the USDA does not require a ninety day reserve. They recommend a twenty five percent reserve and they encourage the creation of a depreciation fund, which is something we had been talking about over the last couple of meetings. Um, the town currently has a five dollar maintenance fee per tap and it goes straight to revenue. And we discussed increasing or adding some kind of fee, possibly towards depreciation fund if we were to decrease from thirty six percent. So maybe, maybe not to kind of offset that. Um, the idea came up that we could look at having the general fund pay for some of our, um, gratis accounts for water. So that rather than it being written off, it's being, uh, paid for from the general fund. In November twenty twenty four, uh, we heard that if we keep ra- water rates at thirty six percent to the end of the fiscal year, we'd be in a much better position to reduce the rate to something more manageable. And we've shown great effort in raising our rates and USDA that we're showing them, we're moving in the right direction. Again, at that time, we discuss, discussed establishing a depreciation fee. Everyone present at that meeting seemed to come to the consensus that the water rate ordinance can and should be updated before July first, twenty twenty five to reflect that it should, the water fund should be reviewed annually by commissioners to determine what to do with the rate from there. And I think, uh, Commissioner Hoover, that's what, what you've been kind of saying from the beginning. And, um, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, during our audit review, we learned that there is a two hundred and fifty nine thousand or water fund that is restricted per code. Um, and we were going to get an update as to what those funds are or what is restricted for. Maybe that's something that we can find out during budget time coming up. So the good news is we have options, like Mr. Eball said, there are options that we can look at. Um, and I think we have a direction, if you cut out all the back and forth, it seemed like we were wanting the ordinance to move to a point where there wasn't an automatic thirty six percent, but we would have to come back every year at a given time, review our expenditures, review our revenue coming in and make a determination on what's best. So that it forces the council, whoever they may be, and town staff to, to reflect and make sure we're, you know, keep our feet to our fire, the fire. So that's something I wanted to throw out as part of the discussion. I have other ideas of things that we could possibly look at, but I just want to kind of open it to the commissioners that that was something we were moving towards. I think we all agree that we can't necessarily go to zero. But we don't want to, we don't want to put the, anything in the red. But what can we do? And the first step of that would be looking at an ordinance that would allow us, enforce us to come back every year to make that determination. Open for discussion.
I don't know where to go anymore from that, really, uh, at this point. I agree with you that my, my opinion is, as I said all along, it's the thirty six percent to me is or too much. Um, at the last meeting, I said, then, you know, I think it's too much. I think zeros maybe just right or too little, I don't know. But I then said, then is anybody else suggestions, but nothing, we never came to anything else. But, um, I do believe, you know, that mean, somebody got other numbers they want us, we can throw out and talk about. I'm more than open to hear that. I just don't want to see a thirty six percent increase again. That's, that's my position. And I do like and continue to like the coming back annually to make the council kind of like to do taxes, but not kind of like exactly the way we do taxes. Make a consensus that we are or we are not going to change the rate year after year after year. So, so the council has to make a decision and hopefully not get us back in the situation that town has been in for the last several years and, and struggling to get back out of that again. And then have more meetings like we have last month where it gets, you know, emotions get, get a little high. Uh, but to try and control that and prevent that. And as you said, I agree. We don't want to have the, um, the water fund or any other fund for the town. Um, to be, you know, in the red, uh, for any reason. And, you know, we got to be able to run, run and maintain our business. We got to do our day to day work. We got to do our future projects and things like that.
Right.
But, but to do it, you know, to where we ma- maintain the course consistently across the board for, you know, year to year to year instead of we're doing real good, then we're doing real bad, then we're doing real good, then we're doing real bad, back and forth. So that's what I'm trying to avoid.
And, um, the change in ordinance, but also lasts longer than five years in the sense that it forces council to come back every year, even past five years to, to keep tabs on our water fund expenditures and our revenue to figure out where to go so that.
Your current ordinance has you after the, after the fifth year, the thirty six percent, then it goes to a three percent.
Right.
For perpetuity. You know, unless, unless the new ordinance comes out to change it.
Correct.
But there would, oh, there would always be some sort of increase and that three percent is probably not a horrible number, really. Um, you know, it's somewhere closer to CPI and, um, for foreseeable future, three percent would probably be a reasonable CPI number to, to have. If you're not going to do year to year, every year to make a decision, I think that three percent is, is a good reasonable number. It's not outrageous, too much, too little. Um, but I just, would, would really maybe look at the, um, looking at it year after year after year and forcing the council to make a decision really was because of the, the five years of the previous council, three years or so ago that made that decision. They made it and others could sit there and say, I didn't, I didn't do it, I didn't do it. And I just was trying to avoid that to where every year you're responsible for it. Whoever's sitting here is responsible for it. So he or she's not, you know, hiding behind the previous council. The three percent number is a good number. I mean, I think, you know, for, for the, for the long haul, if, 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 if year after year, looking at it's not, not the desired. And I think the three percent is a reasonable fair number that will hopefully keep, keep the town on track to maintain, maintain the course of being, you know, keeping up with inflation.
Here, here's my concern. I think we may have missed this point. Um, uh, it's most people that I talk to and the business owners raise concern about the water rate a- and raising it up. That the outside is, oh, you know, we, we hear about this nine thousand. That's just water production cost. That doesn't cover maintenance of our lines or if anything breaks. We have to be aware. What are we going to do if that happens? If the main line on the mallet goes up? What are we going to do? But we, we have to, it, it's not an easy line to walk, you know? It was twenty years getting here and it may seem to be unfair that it's us, but that's what we're here for. We have to make the hard decision. Um, that's why originally, you know, I'd asked staff to give us some different percentages down there. And I was really surprised and appreciate the effort that you turned it around this fast. But we can't run production cost in the red. I- in my mind, just pretend, I'm just talking the production cost just to produce the water in the red, to run that in the red is unethical. You know? It's, uh, we can debate how much we need to, for repairs going forward. And, you know, what's the minimum we need and what's our fallback plan? Because our lines are old, some are, uh, what, a hundred years old right now? They're going to keep failing. You know, and we haven't had a major catastrophic failure yet.
I agree. We can't put things into the red. And that's I mean, something that can be looked at is what is there's a lot that can be looked at. I don't want to get into the nitty gritty right now. First thing is, do we want to provide direction on amending the ordinance? So that that gets on the books before July first. Who are we motioning to? Oh, I'm just looking. It's hard to keep going like this. I should be on one end so I can just look down the room.
I would, I would, I would like to move forward with amending the ordinance. I think of course, our attorney could, um, advise, but I think we could simply add a paragraph to the existing ordinance that the automatic percentage increases previously.
Commissioner, can I just have you pause? Thank you. I'm sorry, can you repeat?
I think it would be as simple as adding a subsection to our current ordinance. Um, that basically says the automatic percentage increase is previously specified for FY twenty six and beyond or hereby superseded by the board's authority to set rates by resolution. And then we would, in fact, each year at a deter- predetermined time, look at the budget thoroughly. Look at the projects that we're gonna have or plan to do in the upcoming fiscal years and set the rate accordingly. Maybe it's three, maybe it's five, maybe, who knows what it's going to be because each year it changes. Each year expenses are going to increase and we're not going to know years out how much we're going to need.
And we also don't know years out what might come in to help us so that we don't have to pay for all the projects in cash. We don't know that yet.
But you also, here, here's my, my concern. If you bring it up every year, we end up the same place. We have over twenty years. Nobody wanted to vote an increase because it's unpopular. And then we end up twenty years down the road having to give people a hundred percent increase instead. Where if we tied it to the CPI and said, unless there's specific action, it will raise by, say, the CPI. That way it gives you the point to step in and say something, to take an affirmative or negative vote. But I don't want the issue ducked for twenty years.
Right. So you, you don't want it to be, we're, we're in a position and we're just doing nothing and say, oh, we'll just let it go.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Can I share with you some figures that I used at my, uh, town hall meeting that were kind of eye opening to and the entire group that was there? I think Commissioner Hagan will attest to that if, if that's okay.
Yes, and do you have, um, notes from your town hall? Or you said you were going to take copious notes for us?
Yes, I do. Let me see, let me figure this out first. Well, not really. They set me up.
They should click that to open it for you, Mr. Mayor Davis. There you go.
I need the little slide there. There we go. Let's see if I can get this thing working. This, this, this is a, this is a, a water bill. As a matter of fact, it's my water bill for last quarter. Uh, with the gallons that I used. Uh, my wife does a lot of laundry, you can see that. But we used in a twelve thousand five hundred and fifty, fifty gallons. Our water bill was, was actually a hundred and seven dollars and ninety five cents, and that came out to a dollar twenty cents a day. My total utility bill was three twenty one seventy six. And that comes out to three dollars and fifty seven cents, uh, a day. And that was for water, sewer, garbage, your stormwater, the whole works. With a thirty six percent water increase, my bill would have went up thirty eight dollars and sixty cents, which would have put my water up a dollar to a dollar sixty three a day. And we can add the three percent sewer rate that was in the current, current ordinance, which would add another four dollars and thirty four cents. So my utility bill would go up to three sixty four seventy. And it would be just over four dollars a day for all of my utilities. So for the year, my utility bills will be one thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty cents. And that's for the essentials that you need to, to live off of. We can't go without water. And then you see this three thousand dollars down below. Anybody have any idea what that is? That's what I pay a year for Comcast. So as you can see, the essentials in life are much cheaper than the things that I can control. Uh, my grandkids might not be happy with losing Disney. I wouldn't be happy with losing some sports channels. But that is the difference in what we're playing, paying for the necessities in life and the luxuries in life. So, uh, so I, I hope that makes things just a little bit clearer.
I think it makes it clear for your family, yes. And I think we do have families that don't have the three thousand dollars for Comcast, who don't have luxuries. We do have fifty percent below the Alice poverty level. Um, and we don't know their situations. We know your situation, we know our own situation. But it again is a very, it's going to change from family to family and we do have a senior population on a fixed income. And I don't think anyone on the council is suggesting that we don't have an increase. I think the, the idea is that we have the flexibility to determine how to move forward. Um, so that we are not locked into thirty six percent for five years unless we determine we want to. Because the ordinance would allow for that if we wanted to do that. But at least this way, it keeps the conversation going.
Yeah, well, and, and I'll repeat this again and then I'm done. My recommendation is not, uh, five years of thirty six percent. My recommendation is thirty six percent for this one last year to take care of that. That we still have citizens drinking out of water mains that look like that. And, and we need to take care of them. It's not fair. And unless we do this thirty six percent, uh, we won't even have enough money to start the engineering projects that we need for the West Main Street people or the Waynesboro Pike people. Or I'm sure there's pa- places back on Federal Avenue that I consider Old Town Emmitsburg that need to be taken care of because that's what they're drinking out of there. So I just, I just really hope that, that you all take into consideration our twenty million dollars of projects that need to be completed and need to be taken care of. So, so we can finally bring this to, to an end. And, uh, the citizens that I talked to, and I think Commissioner Hagan will, will, uh, attest to that, that they're, they're they were okay with, with one more time of thirty six percent and ripping the Band-Aid off instead of just taking it off little by little every year. And where we can see a, a progression and see some progress made in this project. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand there was a, a large turnout for the town hall and I'm, I'm glad to, to see that there was. There were so many people who came out who were interested because as we had been talking about before, we're not seeing that turnout here at town, our town meetings. And we are encouraging people to come here and be part of the discussion and be part of the process, be part of public comment. So we can have that on record and they can hear us, um, all the, all the factors that are going into this decision. To be an active part of that process. So hopefully. to be an active part of that process. So hopefully we can get them to start coming here as well. And all of us can benefit from their, their their feedback and hear the same information that we're hearing. But again, I, I don't think that the ordinance being tweaked is going to it still gives you flexibility to go with 36% if you wanted to. It comes down to now we have to look at the numbers and what other options we have, or maybe we don't have other options. But I think part of the frustration from the last meeting was, as I reviewed, as I reviewed our meetings and our workshops, we were being told, we're looking good, we're looking good, yep. You know, let's get through the second year, you know, we're, we're on track. And now we're told if we don't do 36%, we can't even start projects. So there's, there's just this. It feels very abrupt. When that's, that's not the discussion that we had been having. Either way, I think that there are, are things that if we were to, if we were to decide to amend the ordinance so that we had control every year to determine that rate increase, we could look at other things in the meantime. We could look at, you know, what factors are contributing to our increased expenditures? What factors then, if any, need to be reconsidered? Excuse me, do we prioritize wants versus needs, like the nice-to-haves if the budget allows? Do we look at pausing grants that we have that might affect parks that, or anything that might inadvertently impact our water fund and only keep those grants specifically for water and sewer? Do we look at what items are charged to the water fund? Each town interprets what is charged to an enterprise fund differently. Wasboro, for example, only charges the cost of physically running the water and sewer systems such as electricity, chemicals, plant materials, replacement parts, and salaries of the town plant staff to the water fund. And all other is charged to the general fund. So municipalities have leeway there. And I'm, I'm curious as to how other neighboring towns address water and sewer bills for emergency services and activities buildings. Like, I know we have a very low donation right now to Vigilant Hoes. And how do we compare to other municipalities as far as that donation? Are we providing enough donation to support our emergency services with our current donation? So, you know, looking at that as far as, you know, are, are we?
I might be able to help you with that one. It's funny that, that came up because today we got a, the, the county mayors have a, have a text group. And one of the mayors asked what is, was given to emergency services in the other towns. And I can tell you that. So it must've came from Mount Airy because it had some of the so here it is, Carroll County, Hampstead, they get $40,000, Manchester, $30,000, Mount Airy, $200,000, New Windsor, $20,000, Westminster, $125,000, Sykesville, $15,000, Tontytown, $25,000, Brunswick, $15,000 plus utilities, Middletown, $20,000, there's Mount Airy again, so it must've been Carroll. Myersville, $6,500, New Market, $8,000, Rosemont, $6,000, Walkersville, $30,000. And Thurmont is $30,000 also.
So yes, we have a very low donation to our Vigilant Hoes. So looking at others, it seems like from the general fund that could possibly be up. And then you know, how, how are they, how are they dealing with bills for their activities buildings? Do we know that? Is that something we can ask?
Well, that's something we got here from.
Activities buildings. How do they address water sewer?
Thurmont does charge there for the event complex. They do charge water and sewer. Tontytown does not charge water and sewer for, for anything, even the carnival grounds.
Okay.
And they donate $25,000. New Market is kind of on county water, so that's a whole different ballgame there. But they're the ones that we could find out about that. And I will tell you, and I do know the, the fire department does not charge any nonprofits for, for use of their building. We, we donate our building use to all the nonprofits and schools in the Emmitsburg area, including the high schools and middle school in Thurmont.
So, I mean, that's something that this is not an attack. This is upping our donation and our support for our firefighters. Because if we were to increase our donation to be more comparable from the general fund more towards what, I don't know, Tontytown or Thurmont or whoever, to be more in line. And then if those, if the activities building did pay water, then that would be beefing up our water versus writing it off. But it would be offset by the donation that would be increased. So it's not as if there would be any loss of money there. If anything, there'd probably be a head. But looking at creative options to still support who we need to support, but not making sure that we're using the funds the way it makes sense for our water fund. So.
Well, as, as one citizen pointed out to me, he said, it sounds like you're playing checkers because you're just moving, moving pieces around. Because eventually if you keep taking things out of the general fund, then we're gonna have to raise a property tax to, you know, to take care of that. Or if you take money out of the sewer fund, which, you know, while we have a million dollars in there, we also have 66% wild water going into our sewer system. So we have repairs that have to be done there too. So they said, it just sounds like you're keep playing checkers and just keep moving pieces around. And you're, you're never gonna, gonna crown your, your king there or whatever you do in checkers. I haven't played for a while, but that's what, how one citizen described it to me and it kind of.
Well, in a way, that's what we do, right? We play checkers and find out. You know, we look at other municipalities, how everybody's handling it different. But what makes sense for us, our general fund, our water fund? We're looking for creative ways that haven't been looked at before without shortchanging anyone. That's not the biggest issue on hand. All I'm saying is we have things that we can look at. If we want creative options, we have some to look at. Is there direction as far as where we want to go from here? We, we all talked about the, an update to the, or a tweak to the ordinance. Do we move and give direction on that?
If we do nothing with the ordinance, 36% is gonna go into effect July 1st. So if we're all opposed to that happening, we need to do something with the ordinance. First and foremost. I think that gives us time to look at alternatives. Where can we pull money from? What line items can we reduce? You know, if, I've heard two different figures. I've heard it said that the town did not increase water rates for 10 years. And then I've heard that they didn't increase water rates for 20 years. I don't know which is correct. It really doesn't matter. But we then, personally, I feel if, if the town didn't do their due diligence, okay, in ensuring the water fund was sustainable, you then cannot turn around and put that on the backs of the residents and the businesses to make up the difference in five years. It's not ethical, it's not fair, it's not reasonable. So we're gonna have to look, in my opinion, look at alternatives where the town can help the water fund. And I think we have ways to do that. You know, I, I think we have to even look at our personnel costs. Because if our water fund's in, in the red, you know, then how can we get away with, you know, raising personnel cost? So I think there's a lot to consider. I think we can find the money to put in the water fund, to bring it up to where it needs to be, to, to create a depreciation fund. But somebody mentioned a major catastrophe. If that happens, an extra, you know, $100,000 in the fund's not gonna touch that. We're gonna have to take out bonds or loans for major infrastructure improvements. Even if we do the 36% increase for another year, we don't meet our 90-day reserve. So it's still not gonna get us to where we need to be. We're gonna have to do it incrementally over a period of time.
Well, USDA said 90 days was, was ideal, but it is that is not a requirement.
Commissioner, you made real good comments there and you, you're helping me make my case. Because if we keep putting it off, we're not gonna get to that point where we can handle a catastrophe. And we already know that we have, we need to get between 15 and 20 million dollars to eliminate the potential for catastrophes. You know, and, and if we keep putting it off, we will have a, Kim, what is, if we would go 36%, what would our, our numbers look like? Our surplus, excuse me, I'm sorry. Around 400,000? So in, in two years, staying not raising after this year, not raising after this last 36%, we would almost have a million dollars. That's much better shape than what we are right now.
Mr. Evil.
I understand that. I understand. I understand that, but that can be changed.
All right, sorry.
That can be changed.
Mr. Evil, I'm sorry. Well, I, I, unfortunately, public comment is over. Yeah. Should we do a recess? Mr. Evil, should we, should we break for recess? No, it's okay. I'm sorry. I know. But thank you. I'm sorry. Now I forgot what we were talking about, so. Oh, that.
We know we can't do anything, zero.
Can't do anything. And we do see different options at the top.
Split in half at 18 to see what that would do. What would 18 do? 200, 225,000?
Well, we have on our sheet here that was sent to us the if we did. Well, I don't see 18, 15, but I see 20.
At the last meeting, we talked about splitting it in half, 18, half of the 36.
I think our break even, according to the sheet, is the break even would be 10.17% excluding depreciation. However.
We don't want to break even. We want to keep, we want to have some surplus.
But this is different than the okay, so this is different than the other expenses though. Before, we were told 840.
That was with no increase, correct?
No, 840 would be the estimated, I'm sorry, revenue and we would be 9,000 in the whole. So now estimated expenses are 925,408. I'm
That's without increasing. It'd be 9,000 in the whole. If we stayed as it is now, is that correct?
If you leave it where it is now, your estimated revenue is 840 and you're just, that's your utility charge.
Correct.
Just your utility charge. It's not taking into consideration the other revenue pots that are, are not consistent.
Right.
And we were told that estimated expenses would be 849. That was, yeah, well, that was a draft budget. That was at that time of the meeting. That's where we were with expenses. So now we're up to 925. Correct. So at this point, in order for us to hash this out, and it's already May, I mean, that's a large jump between last month and this month. And I know that the budget still needs to come together. But at the same time, then we need to start looking what's pulling on our what are those expenses made up of? I still don't think it negates.
We got a new water line coming in on this year. North Seaton's coming on, when we started, correct?
I know, North Seaton won't be on, but your water clarify will be up and running by the end of this year.
Project, we have to go out for bid for the.
Correct. So, so North Seaton should go out to bid. And the, oh, give me a second, I have the timeline. Looks like it would go out, come to the board hopefully in August, September. With construction possibly beginning October, November. It's 18 months of construction. So it's, it's 9:30, so we don't want this to drag on all night. What is?
We know we can't do zero. Nobody wants to do 36.
So then we need to.
We have to find a number in between.
We need to change the ordinance in order to do that. Right? Because the ordinance states we're 36% for five years. So that's.
I, I, I think we're all agreed that it's just the number we need to come up with. I, I don't think there's appetite for a 36%, but I don't think anybody has, even remotely wants to be in the red.
Correct. But in order to do that, no matter what the number is that we come up with, the first thing that needs to happen is to change the ordinance.
So, so the mayor, so the mayor has asked to keep it at 36% for another year.
And then go, go away with it.
And, and it keeps going back and forth about the number, a number, a number. It doesn't seem to be a number coming out.
Correct.
So, and, and this late in the game, at this point now, in the, in the year and the month, or whatever, ordinance time, trying to do something for July, you know, and I, and I agree that we, we'd had a similar discussion back in January, November, maybe, I don't know what that was, but, but I don't really want to maintain a 36% increase again another year. But I'm not hearing another real solid number with any real reasoning other than understanding the mayor has a number, he has a reason for it. But we're not coming up with a number and we're not coming up with a you know, and we, in the last meeting, we didn't come up with a number then. So just to, I mean, we can all sit here and pull a number out of the, out of the air, but that ain't happening. So at this point, you know, as much as I dislike it, I'm not so sure to not move forward, just leave it on the stand.
I mean, 36% doesn't get us to where we need to be regardless. So, you know, to, to put that on the backs of our business and residents, it's not fair. It's not fair. Well, so I think we should come up with it, with a different amount and we can, what, what are the options? Can we move money?
Can I pause for a second? Does the number need to happen now? Because the first step would be changing the ordinance, so we have that flexibility.
You need a number to change the ordinance. You can't, you know, so you can give direction to change the ordinance, but you have to give a number to change the ordinance.
Well, the
To be voted on.
The direction could be that we need to
it could say that the board would set the rate by resolution.
Well, here's part of the problem is we're not learning until tonight that now estimated expenses are 925,408. Okay, so when we get, and I understand that's part of the budget process, but it doesn't leave us any time to, to really look at that line by line. So.
Well, the one reason that, that went up was because Well, the one reason that, that went up was because, uh, uh, we were tasked with doing better business practices, or whatever that term was, and we haven't been doing that with expenses to where the fair share of, uh, salaries and benefits were not coming out of the water fund at the direction of, uh, the commissioners. So they wanted the fair share on the income side, but you didn't want the fair share on the expenditure side. So, in order to make that right and use best accounting practices, we, we are moving that back.
Okay.
That's our proposal in the budget. Because we can't have it one on one side and not on the other.
Well, I mean, there we go. So that, that accounts for some of it. But at the same, that would have been helpful information to have, that, that was proposed in the budget, and again, we were gonna what, find that out next week?
It's in your budget.
I'll find the exact line in our forty-page document that points that out.
It's in the summary.
See it in your, that we're moving everything back.
In the summary that you handed out? I'm not, I'm not clear on what, where being backed.
Uh, the fiscal year twenty-six statement, uh, budget summary that we just handed out at the start of the meeting. If you go to the second page under Concerning Town Staff, number four, is where I mentioned that we allocated the expenses, so.
What number are you looking at? I'm sorry. On page two. So we just received this tonight. Like literally handed to us tonight. So this is the first we, we're hearing of that.
Oh, so we're moving the benefits. We're moving the home department.
Commissioner, you.
We're not changing home departments. We're allocating based on where the time is actually spent, all of the benefits as well, as is best practice.
Wow.
Is what you asked for on the income side, so it had to be done on the, uh, expense side also, Commissioner?
Um, I'm not sure what you're saying I asked for. Um, the town has always at, the benefits have always been charged to the employee's home department. And then if they spent time, if an employee spent time in the water fund or sewer fund, a percentage of their salary would be charged to the water or sewer fund. But benefits were always the employee's home department. So now you're saying if, um, somebody from the maintenance staff spends any time on water operations, those, the portion of the benefits that are tied to the percentage of the salary will be charged to the water fund. That's, that's huge. That's a big change.
Yes, that came from conversations we had with the town attorney and the auditors over the past week or so, um, as we were investigating, uh, allocating all expenses or all, uh, revenue correctly across the board. So we were transparent and allocating all revenue fairly. And during those conversations with the auditors and the attorney, they, they did tell us that you need to be allocating your expenses exactly the same way you do your revenue. So it has to be fairly allocated across the board. And when we told them that we were doing home department for benefits, but allocating salaries, that's not correct. You need to allocate all your expenses fairly across the board. So that's what you'll see.
But that's never been done before, correct?
That had not been done before here.
So, now we're gonna correct that and the water fund in the same year.
We're correcting revenue, we have to correct expenses at the same.
Well, then we can go back to look at what is being charged to the water fund. Paper, mowing, cell phones, whatever, and that can come out and be charged accordingly to the general fund. So we, we can go, we can go down a rabbit hole.
Right, we're following the advice of our attorney and our auditors, that's all, on our end. It's, the board can do whatever they wanna do.
That's right.
But we're gonna do whatever we need to do. By our attorneys and auditors.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear it from them, because this is the first time it's being brought to our attention again.
Well, that is because we just had the allegations put against us recently in a letter from one of the commissioners, so we didn't have much time to do this either. And, uh.
What allegations are you referring to?
Uh, the, the letter you shared with us.
The one about interest?
Yes, with interest and the, and the, the practices that, uh, were being accused of, of not doing properly. So if we're not doing them properly on the income side, we're not doing properly on the expense side, so we decided to correct them all, so we would be operating properly.
Yeah, the, the commissioner, I don't think it was allegations. I was that commissioner. I brought it to the attention. Let's just get it out in the open and make it a matter of public record. Um, our investment interest, our interest income is supposed to be returned to the fund that generated that income. So if we have two million dollars in our water fund, two million dollars worth of interest, well, not two million dollars worth of interest, but the interest that would be returned to the water fund would be based on the account balance. That is what the state of Maryland says. That is what GAAP says, and that is what GASB says. That's the law. We weren't following the law. We were putting fifty percent of all interest into the general fund, twenty-five percent in water, and twenty-five percent in sewer. I have the numbers dating back to FY seventeen, when this policy went into effect.
And Commissioner, you're exactly right, and, but that policy, that has been taking place since twenty seventeen, long before any of us were here. And the reason that was done was to try to save the water fund, because right now, what is the water fund getting in interest? Zero, because it's showing a negative balance. So, th- that practice was done to try to save the water fund. The only time the water fund was making any type of interest at all was when we put ARPA money in there, which is going to be gone, and now they'll be making nothing again. So you're not doing anything to help the water fund. If we were doing something incorrectly, we wanna fix it, and we will, but we're gonna do it on both sides of the house. It's not gonna be at the convenience of what we think might be right. You wanna accuse us of doing something wrong? Fine, we'll fix it, but we're gonna fix the whole thing. We're not gonna fix just a small part of it.
Well, I would like to see the updated accounting policy. It's, uh, something that should be approved by resolution by the town council. And if you wanna talk about numbers, in the last, uh, two years since we've had ARPA money, the water fund has lost close to forty thousand dollars in income.
And that should only take a short time for it to, to lose everything because you don't have any money in there. So you'll be getting nothing.
Not following the law.
We are following, going to follow the law, but we're gonna follow it on both sides of the book, not just one.
Well, I heard is it best practice? Is it a law that the employee's home department?
Best practice. I'm not aware of a law.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Well, you're the one that keeps telling us about best practice, so we're trying to fulfill.
I'm not talking about best practice. I'm talking about the law.
Your letter.
I asked you to have the attorneys review the law. I've report, I've mentioned, I've discussed this with the auditors in length, and they don't seem to have a problem with it. So, are they violating auditing principles? What is the Maryland law on investment income?
That it should go with the account where it originates from. I agree with that, and that's what the town is going to do.
But we are going to do it on both sides of the, of the, of the ball.
Well, there's a difference between the law and best practices, so I think we need to discuss that as a board.
Yeah, I agree. Just like, it's best practice to have a ninety-day reserve, but that's if you can get there, and it's not required per USDA.
Here, here's the thing, I have to put my accountant hat back on here and speak. So, you're getting in, a lot of this truly is, it's what's considered best or standard practice. It's not legally obligated. Where the obligation comes into that, if you accept bonds or grants, it's not uncommon for the bond or grant agreement to say that, that income has to go back there, but it's not a carte blanche rules, and people handle it differently at their, their, everybody does. Now, what, the, the big thing where I, I raises the, the hairs on the back of my neck when I hear says, well, it's the ninety days is required, or this is required. Yes, it's not required, but what you get into is then, oh, we can't get grants from USDA if we don't have this. They don't say you have to have it. They just take you out of the running for getting mo- future money.
That's not what they said, though. I watched the meeting back. They didn't say that. I can quote it. I have it here somewhere, but we're getting into the nitty-gritty. I don't know that we need to.
We're getting way off track.
We're getting way off track.
We're here to discuss water rates, not best practices, not USDA, none of that, so.
Well, we are gonna need a, a, an answer so we can prepare a budget.
So, get back to the statement I made earlier, so, as I said earlier before in the past meeting, and it doesn't seem to be a number that anybody really has.
So let's throw one out, five percent. I was gonna say five percent. So, I mean, it, it feels a little, I don't know, vindictive that we're looking at a nine twenty-five in response to a letter that, you know, but, so, I'm throwing out five percent. And then it has to be reevaluated every year.
Will the five percent cover the, anything in the, the budget?
It did as of last month.
So, let's, it, take your five percent, which brings it to the eight eighty-two, um, i- i- and adjusting it, it is standard. You're gonna adjust it on both sides of the ledger. That would be standard accounting. So I'm, I'm not gonna argue that. It's the question of, do we want it enough to break even? That's the question. If you're saying it's gotta break even, I can't run it in the red, five percent doesn't get you there.
Is it?
You gotta go at least fifteen.
I believe our attorney just said it was best practice, but not the law, and now we're trying to cover that this year in addition to our water rate increase in a response to our letter about interest, which feels petty to me. Okay, we can look at, we can look at five percent and then figure out where else we're gonna get the money from. We can go through that line by line at the budget meeting, and we have other options that we had discussed before.
What do you wanna do, Jeff? I think the five percent is a number out of anger, and I'm not gonna export that.
Well, I think thirty-six is the same way.
Uh, my, my thirty-six percent has a plan. There's a plan with that. I, I haven't heard in the last three years, anyone else, any commissioner, come to us with another plan other than you don't like the thirty-six percent.
Okay.
I need a plan.
Plan again. Let's read some options that we talked about. Number one, what are the factors contributing to the increased expenditure? So we'll go through that line by line. Number two, what factors, if any, need to be reconsidered? Number three, we need to prioritize wants and needs. For example, if a concession stand's gonna poll in the water fund, maybe we don't approve those types of things moving forward. Number four, yeah, that goes into grants. Number five, uh, each town interprets what's charged to an enterprise fund differently. So then, if that's best practice, then we need to look at that as well, um, going along your line of thinking. Uh, we also have, well, let me go back. Everything I read before, we talked about a depreciation fee to offset. Uh, we acknowledged that the ninety-day reserve was not required to be eligible for grants, but we had to show that we were competitive with our rates, which they agreed we were after the two years of thirty-six percent compared to others. So I'm reminding the council of what we have already discussed, we already know, and what our options are. So there are options, Mr. Mayor. I just read them to you. I can give you, it's a summary of everything we've talked about for a year and a half. But, you know, it's whether or not this council wants to take the time to look at those options, or if we just wanna say, nope, we can't do any of that, we're just gonna keep going out thirty-six percent.
A- and, and we're trying to reach a twenty-million-dollar goal, and you wanna do it, let's say, all right, let's use the fire department, nine thousand dollars at a time. We're, 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 we're trying to pee into the ocean and trying to see if it's gonna raise the water level at, at this amount of money. You know, we're talking twenty million dollars.
Every little bit helps, though, Mr. Mayor.
It, it does, and it's okay. So, so let the fire department bail you all out if you think that's what's gonna be. Please, please, please do that.
Please let me clarify, you, no, because I don't want this to be misinterpreted, that I'm putting this on the fire department. The donation would offset that, Mr. Mayor.
But, and as we said before, all we're doing is we're gonna take more money out of the general fund, and then we'll raise property tax. We're, we're not taking in enough money to run the town.
We're talking about best practices. That's what the other towns do.
They're all gonna change.
And they're all in the same shape we are.
And they're all gonna be changing their footprint.
So right now, I'm not going down into the weeds again, but needless to say, we have plenty to look at if this council wants to do the work. And we can do the work before, six weeks before the budget's passed. So, if we come up with a, a different number than our fee or to the fire to figure out what else to do, otherwise, there's no incentive for us to ever look at anything other than thirty-six percent. Because we're just gonna rely on that to bail us out of everything. But there are other options. I'm not in favor of the thirty-six percent. Council, what would you like to do? And Commissioner Hoover, I take exception with the five percent is out of anger. I feel like the nine twenty-five in expenditures is out of anger i- in response to the, to the, um, letter of inquiry.
That also, by the way, commissioners, that we never received as a staff. Like, that letter was never received if it wouldn't have been for Commissioner Boebel-Palit. So, uh, you know, we had very little time to react to that.
I forwarded it to you because I wasn't sure if you've received it.
And we, we thanked you for that, because we would have never seen it. It would have been blindsided tonight. Thank you.
Correct. I, I mean, I've brought it to the town's attention numerous, numerous times with no corrections to the policy. So I sent a memorandum to the town council. Okay, the next, the next step would be the Maryland Comptroller. Okay, so I'm following the chain of command. I'm not suggesting, because I see your face, that I'm going to the Maryland Comptroller. I'm following the chain of command. I've brought it to the town, to the accountant, to the mayor, then to the town council. That's the chain of command.
I'm gonna pull us back to water rates. I'm the only one who's thrown out a number. Five percent. Commissioner Hagan, what would you like to do?
I, I don't want the thirty-six percent, but I'd be more comfortable with fifteen percent, so we're covering.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I don't like the thirty-six percent either. But we, can't leave the stuff out. We can't leave it go anymore. So, we're, we're still gonna be in an impasse, because two are gonna be a thirty-six, two are gonna be a five, one's gonna be a fifty. So how you choose?
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again. What did you say?
I, I choose thirty-six for one more year. In order to get us a little bit of leeway, so we have something that, that we can fall back on if we have emergencies.
Okay, and Commissioner Hoover, you're with at thirty-six percent?
It's certain work is turning back, going back down a rabbit hole over and over and over again. We've been doing for the last, I don't know how long. It just keeps going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and it's just irritating. Um, I don't wanna see the thirty-six percent another year, um, but say, I don't understand the position. I don't understand the other positions as, Mr. Hagan, would you say fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent, yeah, I'm basing everything. We're saying it's nine twenty-five is the, the number, the break-even number. By going fifteen percent, we cover that. But that's what you're covering. You're covering exactly that, then. Right. That's, that's the break.
No, the break even. No, the break even is ten.
We have forty-two left over at the end of the year. While that's not a lot, we're not in the red.
Correct, but could we add a depreciation fee?
Can you add?
We talked about adding a depreciation fee rather than factoring it into the rate. So that was the discussion that we had for the last year and a half.
Yeah, so nine twenty-five, four oh eight was what the draft budget is excluding depreciation. I think we can't go below that number.
I'm sorry, say that first part again.
So it says nine twenty-five, four oh eight is the, the FY twenty-six thing without depreciation. That's our, I don't think we can ethically go below that number.
Okay, so that would be ten point seventeen percent.
Revenue's nine sixty-seven.
Right. That's why I said if we go fifteen percent, we cover that, and it gives us some extra funds. We're gonna have to do repairs. This doesn't cover those repairs.
Well, I don't know, the repair, it's neither here nor there. I mean, the repair line item went up considerably. Um, so I think some of that must be budgeted in, but unless we go through this line item by line item, we don't know.
I can't disagree with that. I mean.
That would be true.
I mean, it is, we have not gone through it, line by line. What we're the case now, we're running out of time, and we have to make a decision. And it's, do we do nothing? That got us into predicament we're in now. Do we keep it at thirty-six percent, a- as the mayor said, and give you this buffer that's going in? Do we do some medium ground that covers it, or do we say, hey, we're just gonna do a token increase? I mean, that, why I'm saying the fifteen percent is I'm looking at that not, you know, the nine twenty-five, our new number for covering just production cost is basically it. Until we go line by line and say this and that, that's the number I'm using. Now, I, we could certainly, when we go line by line and say, well, no, it's actually eight hundred thousand. But we don't have that information yet.
Would you say, it could go up the number? Probably, if you don't know what's gonna break or what's gonna, I mean, if you have nothing to cover, where are you gonna take the money from? Eventually, the money's gonna run out.
Well, we haven't even begun a conversation about our cash reserves and the anticipated projects, and I think we had a contractor come in and look at all of our lines, right? And kind of prioritize which ones needed to be done first, second, and third. Is that true?
That was part of a preliminary engineering report that was done about two years ago.
So I think it would be helpful to see that, like, is North Seaton at the top of the list?
Yes. So, well, DePaul Street, obviously, and then you had the North Seaton Avenue water line. And then you have the West Main and Waynesboro Pike Water Line, as well as your, your, your transmission line down the mountain. And then you have the, the rest of North Seaton Avenue, which is extended past, uh, North Gate out of town. I don't have them listed in order under your CIP. I just have them listed as, um, future projects.
Let's come back to a percentage. It's almost ten o'clock.
Yep.
Where are we? Somebody?
I think we are waiting on Jim. Jim, what was your number? Did you say? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't say. Stumped a little bit.
Yeah, this one.
Sorry. No. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just hesitating a little bit.
Oh, cuz I, I doodled all over that one. I apologize.
That's all right. I certainly agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Hagan. Absolutely cannot go at the break even or less. I agree with that. Regardless, regardless of that number is, as it, as it stands here tonight, I agree to stick with that, you know, that number or above, of course. And, uh, and I agree to have some buffer there that we should do that. I agree with you. Is the total thirty-six percent for another full year? Probably argued either way to make it work for me or work against me, but, um, Commissioner Sweeney, if you don't mind me talking for a minute, Commissioner Sweeney, you had, had, said you leaned towards it.
I said eighteen first. Then they come back with five, and then it was fifteen. You said thirty-six is okay.
I think I'm more leaning at the eighteen.
Well, we talked about eighteen in the last meeting.
And that was the number I talked about before.
They're starting there, and that way they can base the budget off the eighteen.
I think that gives us, uh.
Well, now I need my paper back. Sorry.
And I think that's, I brought that number up before, a while back, and I brought it up, I think, last month.
I'll go with the eighteen. If we're gonna do something, we need to do something that's gonna help and not break you. We need to have a surplus one way or another to cover breakages, because you don't know how cold the winter's gonna be. You know, I can give you an example. I, my company fixed forty breaks in thirty days. Sometimes we had three or four breaks in one day. So we had to cover them breaks all over Maryland, Barstinton, DC.
County will, where to make decisions of.
If, gotta have money back for breaks, or, you know, you gotta pay for the, 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 like, you gotta pay for all the parts, gotta pay for the, the people to fix them.
Commissioner Hagan, did you say fifteen percent? Because that's also puts us above the break.
Right, that's why I just said the fifteen, but, you know, when, last meeting, I asked for ten, fifteen, and twenty percent to give me the numbers. But, and that's what they did here, and I'm just saying, if I'm looking at nine twenty-five, fifteen percent gets me above that number.
Uh huh. Yes. Because ten point seventeen would be the break even. But that doesn't mean we can't look at other options in the meantime.
True.
Yeah.
I, I think we just need to make a decision. We can continue to look at options and try to streamline and figure, is there anything we can cut or, or we can add. But if we're saying, and what I'm hearing is, nobody really wants to go thirty-six percent. Nobody wants to go in the red. Now we're gonna get into this, okay? Do we want there, we have numbers in front of us, and everything's an estimate, and I, the staff turned around, and I'm, I, I think we owe them the, you know, they, to turn it around as quick as they did is pretty good. You know, as an accountant here, I, I'm always gonna go back to that. When I ask my staff to turn around numbers, this is not a simple, just wave it, and it comes up on your Excel spreadsheet. It doesn't work like that. So they, they put in some work, and that's why I'm saying, look, they're, they're saying fifteen, and the number that I'm using, fifteen percent covers it and gives me a little bit of a buffer. I think of the same thing. We have to come with a long-term plan, not only this, but how are we gonna address repairs coming down the road? I don't think we've done that.
So I'm willing to entertain the fifteen percent because, you know, regardless of whether or not expenses have, you know, jumped by eighty-five thousand since last time or, or not, we can still look at addressing those expenses later. But fifteen percent would still give us a padding either way. But I would want to follow it up with some of the other things we talked about. We could look at the depreciation fund and so on, but other options need to come along with that. Not just stop here. Still a work in progress.
No, I, I, I think this is step one of a many-step process.
Correct.
But we need to take the step. We can't stay frozen.
Okay, so fifteen, fifteen, who else will go with that?
I only learned tonight that our benefit costs were increased in the water and sewer fund. I, I wanna see what the impact of that is on the numbers, because the spreadsheet I got last week had the home departments assigned as previous. So I only found that out tonight. So to come up with any number without going through the budget is a terrible way of doing things.
Correct, I, I agree, because a lot of the information we're just getting tonight.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna propose the budget with fifteen percent, and then we go through the budget next two weeks from now. Uh, we got to the, end of June to place the budget.
We've been talking about water rates for three years.
I know, but you're gonna.
I don't.
You're not gonna do it at all. If you're gonna, didn't decide in three years.
Well, we have this year's budget. We can go through that budget, and we can look at other options. A lot of options have been mentioned tonight.
So the way I see it is even if we do fifteen percent, it's less than thirty-six, it still gives us the flexibility to put us in the red, even if we don't change anything about the estimated expenses, right? But that still gives us flexibility to look further if we want to. Either way, we would be in the black no matter whatever, what other factors are put in place, or whatever is whittled down from the budget. Either way, we'd be in the black for, for, um, operating expenses. It just might be larger than we anticipated.
I, I think that we have to make a move on it. When I go out and I talk to people, I talk to the businesses. But I don't know how many business owners in the last two weeks I've talked to, and said, that's one of the number-one conversations they have with their client coming in is about concerns about water, you know, yes, is it raising the rates? Can we keep producing good water? And everything, and I think where we're at now, with the information we have, I think fifteen percent is that midway point that lets us cover, gives us a small, small buffer. But now we can go back and really start digging in and determine what else we can do. But it gives us that first step.
I agree. Ideally, I would like to see it lower. I don't, I feel like this has happened year after year. We get down to the wire, and then the numbers change, and we had, we're kind of forced to go with something higher than we would have liked.
Commissioner, the numbers haven't changed. That twenty million dollars has been out there forever. The numbers have not changed.
Yes, they have, Mayor Davis. The estimated expenditures were eight forty last month. Tonight, they're nine twenty-five.
And, and this is our first presentation of our budget. We were estimating last, last month. We were able to sit down and do what we could do, and this is what it came out to be.
Okay, I understand, but the numbers did change. I'm not making that up. I mean, last time we were talking about nine thousand, the whole, now we're not. Because there were things that this council decided to move from the home departments or benefits that are now being proposed to change and without our knowledge, which is.
That, that wasn't our, that wasn't us. We've, we've been forced to do that. So, you know, like I said, you wanna do best practices on one side of the ball, we're gonna do them on offense and defense. We're not just gonna, gonna do them on one side. And we agree, it's the best way to do it. So we're gonna do it that way.
Okay, we're going down that hole again. So who is in favor of moving forward with less than thirty-six percent? We'll say fifteen for now, but it's, if we keep, if we don't come up with a decision, it's gonna be a thirty-six percent.
I propose moving forward at fifteen percent. And base our future budget on fifteen percent for next year.
There are other commissioners here that can weigh in. Please say something that's ten oh seven. I still say it's five percent. All right, so let's, let's do this.
I'll second the fifteen percent.
Well, there's no vote, but.
He made a motion on the second.
We can't make a motion. It's discussion only. It would be direction, correct.
For them to do the budget of fifteen percent. Okay. That's fine.
So we do have another meeting coming up May twelfth, where we go into the budget.
But they need a number to base the budget on.
Correct. And we can, well, the budget isn't due until the end of June. We could change that if we needed to. I mean, originally, we had longer than a week between the town commission, the town council and the budget meeting. We had originally had two weeks to digest. So we could discuss it next week, too, if we needed to. Fifteen percent, we have two of those. We're gonna end up in an impasse, and the thirty-six is gonna continue to go through. So I need direction, and I need everybody to speak, please, so that we can figure out if we're at an impasse or not. Commissioner Hagan, he's at fifteen.
Fifteen.
Open to fifteen? We don't need everybody to vote. We need three people to give direction. Okay. Revisit next meeting. How does that work if they're presenting the budget? So do we change the budget presentation? Because they don't have direction on what the water rate increase would be.
They have to produce it at thirty-six percent.
Okay, so that's what we're doing, moving forward with thirty-six percent.
It, what's, I understand your, your concern, Commissioner Turnquist, about, you know, not knowing the numbers. But preliminary telling them to approve, but run the budget numbers at fifteen percent, how does that hurt us?
Well, we may not need fifteen percent.
We may.
If the benefits are removed.
And then we can determine going to budget process.
Super fund. I mean, you know, the, the charter gives the board, the town council, the authority to approve our accounting policies.
Which we can.
And to approve public expenditures. So if it's gonna change, we need to agree to that. It's not a law. It's a best practice. It was changed. We only found out tonight it was changed. How much will that reduce the benefits? You know, we haven't talked about the COLA. We haven't talked about the merit increases.
I think all that still can be. I think we can still talk about all of this next week, but in the very least, if there's fifteen.
Well, I mean, we already know what the income's gonna be if it's fifteen percent. They don't need to change the budget for that. It takes utility from eight forty to nine sixty-six, but and we already have the figures.
Well, they would be changing to reflect that.
Yes, and we don't know what that is.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Oh, yeah, we have to do that first. It's not adjourned. We didn't vote on it. It's not adjourned. We didn't vote on it. Yeah, but I didn't hear Hagan say anything and I didn't say anything. Is it adjourned? Okay, I don't think we can adjourn without setting the agenda, so we're all right, setting the agenda for next week. It looks like it's discussion of, yeah, we're meeting next week. Yeah. Yes. Right? I mean, it's still considered a regular town meeting though, right? That's part of the process is we have to talk about the agenda. We don't just am I wrong here?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you do have to set an agenda for May twelfth. Yes. And it is actually a work of commissioners meeting.
Meeting, so we need to have.
It's not a workshop or anything. It's a meeting.
All right, so we're setting the agenda for May twelfth.
Do you want to start with the water rates before you move on to anything else? That's you tell me what I'll tell you what we have to do and then you tell me what order you want it in.
Yes, please.
So uh, number one, what I had is for discussion and consideration approval of ordinance twenty-five twelve, which is approving the town of Emmitsburg fiscal year fiscal year twenty-six budget. Sorry. Number two would be for consideration approval of ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, which is adopting the constant yield tax rate for fiscal year twenty-six. Number three would be for consideration approval of ordinance twenty-five dash ten, approve uh the town of Emmitsburg salary chart. And then you would have discussion of the water rates.
All right, so I think it would make sense to do the water rates first. Wait, let me think. Um I think it would make sense to do water first. And then is the constant yield tax rate a fast one?
Yeah, that's just basically saying that you're going to set it at the point three, four, six, four per hundred dollar assessed.
Okay, so.
You're not increasing your property.
All right, so let's start with that one. That's
Start with that one?
Yes, please. And then water rates and then salary chart and then budget. How about that?
Okay. All right. Um okay.
I I I want to say, and I've got to stand up, one of the things that Commissioner Turnquist has asked for is that the review accounting policies. That's something that's definitively within the board's control. And I know she feels strongly about that. I'm going to second her that we need to put that on the agenda.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
About just the accounting policies. If we're going to discuss moving things there and you know, and we're doing it, that's the accounting policy. And, you know, Commissioner Turnquist is the controller for the board. And I'm I'm going to back her saying that that should be an agenda item.
So looking at our accounting practices, that's a that's a big one too for next week. Do we have more specific?
Well, if we're going to talk about the debate and should this have been moved, we need to have that discussion. Is that going to base everything else?
So you mean like the home departments, the benefits?
Yeah.
That kind of thing. Okay, well.
Because it is, it is best practice, one hundred percent. You know, I'd rather see it done that way. But you're not legally obligated to do it that way.
You're talking about benefits.
Right.
Okay, so so we're going to narrow it down just to those two then, for because it could be a be very big conversation. All right. Home department and benefits and
Where the benefits, how the benefits are divided.
Right. Yes. Correct. Okay, so let's
do we need to consider having a closed session to discuss the colas and or the merit increases? Because in my mind, in my review anyway, um merit increases are capped at three percent. So if we're giving a merit increase above three percent, what authority does that fall under? If you're talking about a personnel matter that affects one individual, one or more individuals, especially a single individual, then it's permitted under the Open Meetings Act. It's called the personnel exception.
If it's a disciplinary or something, I would agree, but if it's not, if it's just salaries, colas or
We wouldn't, I don't think it'd be appropriate to talk about um an employee's salary in an open meeting. I think that does fall under the OMA.
Well, we do, we do have authority to set salaries, though.
We do, in the open.
In the open.
Salaries, salaries, public record.
Okay, well, then we can discuss it at the open meeting. Um.
I don't know. We should be talking about an individual, but I mean, as far as a person getting a, I don't know, a one percent versus a three percent versus a four percent.
If it's greater than three percent, under what authority?
So it would be covered under, we already have the salary chart down as per discussion. So I would imagine.
So I can bring it up next time.
Yes, I think I think we're covered. So okay, so Ms. Willetts, we have one, the constant yield tax rate. Let's do two, the accounting practice.
What's that agenda title?
Uh, how would you like to title that, Commissioner Hagan?
It's just and benefit expense accounting.
You can do that number two.
Yeah, I'll do that number two. And then now I lost track. I read numbers so many times. Then we do water, then salary, then budget.
That just that just puts account in in number two, loses everything else down a notch.
Right. And we can order pizza, because it's
We're going to need more pizza.
We're going to need more pizza, caffeine.
Better order some Advil too.
Advil. Um, is there Ms. Willis, do you have this?
Okay, I'm good. So the um the accounting policy on benefits, that would be specific to benefits. So if we want to look at the accounting policy for interest income, we could do that at a different meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe the following meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. That that way there's a very narrow focus based in light of what we found out.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. Excuse me, um, is there a motion to accept the agenda with the additions as listed? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion? Nope, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm here to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? I think Commissioner Hoover, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at ten nineteen PM.